Meeting to order on July 21st at 5:30 PM for Committee of the Whole Special Order Business Committees. I need roll call, please.
Beaton?
Here.
Becker?
Here.
Fortress?
Fox?
Yes.
Rattie?
Yes.
Hinton?
Here.
Here.
Approval of the agenda, motion?
I make the motion that the board of education approved the agenda as written. Support?
A pro motion to support the agenda is written and Debbie seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing, no discussion. Roll call, please.
Yes.
LeFramboise?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Fortress? Sorry, Fox?
Yes.
Rattie?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes. The next is public comment. Anybody wishing to speak from the public? Seeing nobody, we'll move on to policy and Clark Hill presentation.
Okay. Thank you very much, Board President, for giving the opportunity to present on our policies. We passed out a PPT, but I think we can just rather put it on the screen because where it's not that long, you can just read along there. The first point we'd like to make is that I know that the board is used to hearing that the board is about policy, administration implements policy. But we think that it's important for the purposes of this discussion to think of board policies with a board policies with a big P in board policies with a little p. How, whether or not you're going to build a football field, whether they're going to have different kind of technology, whether they're going to have a new curricula in math or not, those are important decisions that impact student learning. They're big, big policy decisions in keeping, holding people accountable, policy decisions. On the other hand, when we're talking about these policy statements, the book we're talking about, they, they basically, they just set forth the board's values, goals, and exceptional practices providing a broad framework for decision-making in action for the board and staff, and fulfilling their responsibilities, setting forth guidance as to how the school district will react, and our own rules will govern action in response to problems. And the role of these small p policies serves several purposes. One, it satisfies certain legal obligations because the law now is very prescriptive about what they want to put in policy. It's a tool for effective action and rather than an end to themselves. And as I'll go on, you'll see that it's very easy for this to become an end to themselves in a just, in misallocation of your limited time. It gives clear guidance on navigating issues. It gives advance notice of district expectations and standards, and provides transparency and consistency. Now, turning to third page, board policy caveat, the really, I think this is can emphasize this enough, these, the board policy statements you have, they're either prescribed by law or reflect common sense approaches to predictable problem solutions. So the board policies across the state are very similar. They read very similarly substantively. The only big difference is whether there's a lot of guidance in the policy as opposed to administrative regulations. But some of the policy, the board has to take action. It's administrative regulations that the administration can't have. The, it's important that the board focuses time on those things that impact student learning, and it's not with regard to the, the board policy small p's. Again, because it's common sense kinds of procedures, and it's what's prescribed by law. Historically, Neola and I, and I've got some census, I've been working in this area for a long time, Neola, the board policies would be less than 100 pages. And Neola would charge, you know, a modest amount. As time went on, Neola made a decision to incorporate changes in the law in the policies. And the law was changing all the time, so it became a big deal. And board reserve unit policies, even though the law is what the law is, couldn't impact it. It was like a study session. And I had, I had superintendents meet with me, and we would go through Neola, and we would cut out 50% of what they had there because it was, nobody was reading. It got to be 500 pages. In addition, it was the law, and because the law was changing, you had to look in two different, different places. So, and also, Neola started creating in their minds best practices within the, in the policies, which is great to understand best, best practices. But when you made it mandatory, like principals shall do X, Y, and Z, and principals didn't do that, you're creating liability. So Neola policies were actually creating the liability for the district because they're incorporating best practices, and they didn't put in the kind of wiggle language that you wanted to. And so, and it got to the point, also, they were charging $10,000 for, for these policies, and they had 400 districts. They were, they're making a fortune out of this, and that was not right. I always argue with Brad and Askley that MASP should just do the board policies as part of MASP because of all the same, the updates are modest, and make that part of the service. And it didn't happen because Neola was a big benefactor for MASP. And, and so, anyway, so Miller Johnson decided to create their own policies as an alternative. We decided to create our own policies as an alternative. So that policies are not an end to themselves, but a tool. So the Clark Hill policies are minimalist. They do what's required by the law. They are simple and direct to provide flexibility, yet they still provide for addressing the unique culture and needs of the district. Now, I do understand that one of the ways you got here was that there was a gap in the, in the Clark Hill policies with regard to, I think, suicide prevention and threats. That was sent to the, to the superintendent in January, and it just didn't get incorporated. So in fact, our policies were up to date. And again, and we're, it's unfortunate that I didn't incorporate it. The, one of the things that are, apart from having minimal policies, we put more of the explanation in the administrative guidelines because they can be made without board action. And again, so many of these things, it's so easy to get into the weeds with these kinds of issues. Given that we represent more than 100 public schools, districts throughout, we have, well informed as to the needs, and we believe that our policies do a good job of meeting the needs of districts at a minimal cost. And I will say, one of the, one of the things that, that differentiates our, our policies from the others is that, I mean, I think we gave our, the administrative regs and the policies to Hazel Park for nothing. And we, and we only update, we spread the cost of updating among all the clients that use our, our service. So this, in the last year, the Hazel Park was charged two hours for the updates. I understand that the other, other places that offer, they offer, they charge you upfront, and then they charge an update each year. You know, personally, I don't think that districts should be a source of, of making people wealthy. I mean, Neola, they're charging, they're making three to four million dollars on these policies that were the same everywhere. They were just printing money. I don't think it's right. And that's the reason that, that we provide, you know, some of my, my partners say, if you give something to something for nothing, they won't appreciate it. So they charge some of their clients $1,500, $2,500 so that they appreciate what's there. But we gave it to you for free. If you look at our policies, you look at Miller Johnson's, they're very similar. They're going to, substantively, they're really no different. They, they have an annual upkeep charge. Ours, again, is just whatever it takes, we split it among, and it's going to be minimal. And I haven't seen trumes. I know that they're more expansive. And again, but when, when they're, people are telling you, you have to pay attention to board policies, you really got to think in terms of big P and little p. These kind of things that are in, that are in your board policy and are akin to a handbook, like student code of conduct. There's, you look at any student code of conduct in the state, they read very similarly. You can't steal, you can't plagiarize. Similarly, all those policies are very similar, so there's not going to be a big difference. And you can do well with, with, with those. We just think that ours, since you already have them, and we've had no issues with any of our clients working with our policies, we would encourage you and hope that you work, continue to work with them. And, and we do believe that, that we are by far the best value because we can't do it any cheaper than we do. And we think that that's the right thing to do for, for public schools. Now, I'll let you, I kind of cut in on some of the things you were going to.
Your slide right.
Want to start on the three Cs?
Sure. If you'll join me on page seven. So just to introduce myself, my name is Bradley. I'm an associate with, worked with John at Clark Hill. You know, he and I worked together on, on our policies, we did policy updates together. So thank you so much for having us this afternoon to talk about our policies. So as John mentioned, the goal of our policies are not to be overly expansive, not to, you know, give line by line every single tiny detail. And there's a reason why we do that. You know, our policies, our three Cs are complete, concise, and correct. That's what we aim for when we design our policies, when we put them together. Part of the reason is, you know, not only to provide flexibility, but because for somebody who is, say, new to the district or new to schools, when you look through these policies, and you're trying to familiarize yourself, they could become very easily overwhelming. I have been in situations before where I've had a giant policy with me. I mean, it's 10, 12 pages long, and, you know, somebody gets overwhelmed by that information. So sometimes it's, it's delivered best when an administrator or a principal or somebody in the school district can sit down and have that conversation and explain to somebody, you know, what exactly the policies say and how they are dealt with. So in terms of, you know, how we like our policies to be structured, if you go on page eight, we like them to be complete. So we provided here kind of a sample outline of what our model policies look like in terms of, you know, how we see them as being complete. This matches the policies that you have currently in terms of board bylaws, administration, curriculum instructions, so on and so forth. Our administrative procedures follow a very similar outline, so it's easy to follow, easy to connect, and pull all of these, you know, items together. Not every board policy has an administrative procedure, so there are some areas where it's, it's just not necessary. But there are areas where we do have a corresponding administrative procedure. For bylaws, there are, there are no administrative procedures there. Bylaws aren't what the bylaws are. But there's a very specific outline that we follow and that we keep, keep an eye on as we go through and update, check for changes, things along those lines. On slide nine, in terms of how we like our, our policies to read, again, we do like them to be relatively concise. We, we think it is, you know, unnecessary to repeat the law. The law is what it is. And to be frank, laws change. And they change sometimes frequently, either even with, you know, legislatively or with changes, you know, within courts, things along those lines. But the why, the what, and the who is really the goal of what we look at when we're putting together our policies. You know, why is this needed? Is there a legal obligation that we need to have this policy? How is it in line with our mission? You know, are there areas that we can emphasize between policies that are specific to the unique needs of this department? You know, what will show that we are accomplishing this objective, and who will make that outcome happen? So sometimes you'll see within policies there'll be language with respect to, say, the superintendent or designated. Sometimes there's another individual within the district that provides a little bit of flexibility as to who that more appropriate person might be. And when we're trying to figure out who, who is that appropriate person? You know, to give you an example with respect to, you know, trying to, as John mentioned earlier, tailored to the unique needs of the district, I had a conversation with a superintendent recently who was in a rural district, and we were talking about field trips and, and the, you know, how far out do we make that mileage? What is needed there? And it was a back and forth conversation that we do try and have with our clients, and we have them frequently as to how can we tailor this to the unique needs of the district. So where we do have, you know, our model language, we like to jump in, and we like to tailor it and have those conversations as to, you know, what exactly is going to work best with a particular school or district. On slide 10, you know, as you might hope with your board policies is that they will be correct. They will be in line with the law. They will not conflict with other district documents, and that they don't contradict common sense. I would like to emphasize too, conflict with other district documents is, that's something that we look at. That's something that we're very cognizant of, is what handbooks do you have? I know there's a therapy dog handbook that's implemented. You know, are there documents that we have put together in our other services that can align with what your policies look like, what your administrative guidelines look like? You know, if there's something that we're developing that can be beneficial, you know, that's something that we're very aware of and making efforts to ensure that there's consistency across the board, right? Because if you have documents or policies or handbooks that are consistent and all over the place, it's hard to follow. It becomes difficult. And it's something that, you know, we try very hard to prevent that from, from happening and making sure that our policies are correct, not only legally, but also consistency among each other. On page 11, for our administrative guidelines, you know, as I mentioned, we do work directly with schools with development of administrative guidelines. We do have our own model administrative guidelines. Those are, you know, relatively lengthy. But as, as I mentioned, you know, with respect to the field trip example, that is something that was a conversation that we could have to say, we need to tweak this a little bit to our unique needs and circumstances. You know, this is something that, you know, we try to be very mindful of and have those conversations in terms of administrative guidelines. And to John's point, it's, those are in the weeds type details that I don't know necessarily to be had for tables. In terms of 40 miles, is that enough? Or is it too much? Or is it too restrictive? That's something where the way can be delegated to the superintendent or to another individual to have those conversations, iron them out. But nonetheless, there is that governing board policy that is there, and that provides that ability and that power to have that conversation. I will say some guidelines have legally mandated content. We provide those as templates. You know, for example, the Title IX policy has areas in there that have to be filled out. Who is your Title IX coordinator? You know, there's highlights that we'll put in there so that when it's being reviewed within that administrative guideline, that can just be plugged in and it's ready to go. You have all of your legal information in there. It's, you know, easy to follow, all things considered. And so there is some legally mandated content that we do have in there that we be very mindful of. That way, it's all spelled out, that you can still go in and plug in things as needed for your, for your own district. In addition to our policies and administrative guidelines, we provide student codes of conduct, extracurricular student codes of conduct, and Freedom Information Act guidelines. You know, as I mentioned earlier, we do like to ensure that these things are consistent among each other, that we've got policies that are consistent with administrative guidelines, that are consistent with code of conduct, that are consistent with all these other documents. We think it's incredibly important to have that consistency so things aren't different at one building, but different in another building. It causes a lot of headache, causes a lot of stress, and can be confusing, particularly for individuals who may go from one building to another, to ensure that everything is being implemented across the board as is. So in terms of coordinating with, with Clark Hill, with us as we, you know, assist with our policy services, as John mentioned, we do have a modest cost designed only to recruit the actual time spent. You know, as he said, this isn't something that you see as a money grab. These are important documents. They're important policies. They are something we refer to regularly within our own practice, as I'm sure you do within your jobs. You know, as, as board members, you know, these are documents that, you know, you want to be familiar with, to know what these say, and how to implement them, and how they're being implemented within your district. You know, we pride ourselves on having a deep understanding of what is going on, not only within the community, but also within Michigan. We do have four offices across the state in Birmingham, Detroit, Lansing, and Grand Rapids, meaning we know what's happening with our peer districts. We know what's happening across the state, and we're able to have those conversations and to think, you know, what is, what are the trends? And to have those, have that knowledge and information. And we do think it's important to have these conversations because there are times where boards or superintendents, individuals within the district will run into something, and they'll say, this is something that we need to address. We need to implement, you know, a policy or administrative guideline, and we can have that conversation. So we do think it's, we pride ourselves on our ability to do that, you know, and be mindful of, you know, what are the, what is happening within the state of Michigan, given that we are a Michigan specific.
Yeah. And in that regard, one of the things, beginning March 13th, 2020, our practice group meets, started meeting 9:00 in the morning when Governor Whitner started her 183 executive orders. We started meeting, and we've met every workday since then, with a few, you know, Christmas Eve. But we meet every day that somebody can. If you got a conflict, like today, we had, what, 12 people on, and exactly, like, what's the issue of the day? I got a problem in this district with a Freedom Information Act request. How would we handle it? And that enables us to be, because again, with, with, these are people from all four offices. We're in touch with developments across the state. So we believe that we have a deep understanding of what the needs are. And, and we encourage you to stay out of, focus on the big P and, and these kinds of things that are prescriptive by the law or are substantive, we just accept it throughout the state. You know, let the administration deal with those and focus on those things that are really going to impact student learning. That's kind of where we try and, and encourage our clients to focus on and help them.
Anybody questions? Questions or comments? No one?
Yeah, John and Mary, they, we've had a couple discussions lately, and I know that this is probably an unanswerable question because guidance is mixed at best. But as it relates to special education, especially, you know, looking at big changes to IDA for the process of OCR complaints and things like that, what's, what is, what is that interaction between board policy, law, and, you know, sort of where those intersect, and how policy is changing on the fly? You know, the, the type of work that this board would have to do along with either Clark Hill or the, the selected policy firm to kind of navigate through all of this, like special education specifically?
It's not a small p. It's not a policy issue. The law is, the law is there. By the way, we, we believe we have the strongest special ed practice in the state. We have three dedicated people and other people who are joining in this as well. And we talk of special ed, you know, every other day. What's happened is that a year and a half ago, the United States Supreme Court changed the law so that before, if you had an IDA, special education issue, that remedy was exclusive, and you couldn't go outside and get damages. A year and a half ago, the Supreme Court changed that. So the plaintiff's bar is all over our public school districts, wherever they are, finding a violation of the IDA, which is very, very prescriptive, very difficult to, to deal with some of the situations. And if there's a violation, they, they're pursuing it in court. And we do, we have, we're representing, we've represented Troy College Schools, and we, right now, we're engaged in five lawsuits where staff did not, and this is why you want to, you don't want extraneous things in your policy, staff did not follow some provisions of the law, and the plaintiff's lawyers are looking for, you know, to pick their fortunes on it. So part of it, it's the, the law is very prescriptive. There's very little in policy that you even have because the law is so prescriptive. The problem is that it's hard to find quality people to take positions. For, you know, for example, you've got Edison coming in, and you have so many staff who get hits, you know, that scratched. We have this throughout the state. Some of our ISDs that we represent have terrible challenges with children. But under the law right now, you can't, you have to still educate those students. Doesn't make any sense to expel them because you still have a duty to educate them. And parents' expectations are often realistic. And now, we just, last Friday, we had a discussion, the Sixth Circuit came out with a case that found that the school district had accommodated, did you anybody remember, in Ilar, maybe Marshall did, the school district accommodated the parent's request for a student who was dyslexic, and after the student, and so everything, did everything the parent wanted. But at graduation, the student, although he understood a lot about science and social studies, he was a non-reader. And the Sixth Circuit just came down and said that the student did have the ability to read, and you failed them, district, so you have to go back and make comp. That, that's, that's a change in the law. It's, it's just the people on the ground dealing with difficult situations need to make hard choices. It's not a, a small p policy thing you can fix. It's training, have more training so that people understand. And I know that you do a lot of training in this district. The jobs are just tired, and because the plaintiff's bar smells money, you're going to expect to continue to have these issues. And some of them are going to be completely, we worked with a school that had, one of the staff filed a complaint with the ISD against the principal, and the ISD said there was nothing there unless she complained, and wouldn't identify what the principal was doing. And we, we try to have meeting after meeting. She refused to meet. She got a lawyer. We tried to meet with a lawyer. She ended up, she was laid off, and now she's filing a lawsuit for a complaint that we never, never knew. This is just the plaintiff's bar looking at trying to make a living. And so I don't think it's a little p issue with special education. Do you want to add anything for that?
With respect to policy, we, sometimes we'll take an approach where, you know, if there's a particular legal issue, where there's a lot of back and forth happening. You know, to give you an example, we, we've seen this recently with Title IX, where we had 2024 regulations come in from the Biden administration. Those were implemented and effective August 1st. Then from January, those were, you know, ruled by federal courts to be, you know, invalid. So then we had to switch back to the 2020 regulations. And so with areas like that, that are very heated, controversial, lots of back and forth, we try to take, take an approach where we say, okay, we need to adapt to this, and say, you know, is there something in the policy that we can broaden this up a little bit to recognize that we have these legal obligations, you know, and cover that, you know, so to speak, cover that base, whereas, you know, where perhaps there's possibility within, say, administrative regulations, where we could, you know, go in and tweak these things back and forth. Of course, that depends on board, but I think that there's areas, you know, special ed certainly is one of them, even the cases that John has cited, where, you know, things can be tweaked, where we're saying, okay, what can we do here to make, make sure that we are not in this back and forth and back and forth, given where things are, you know, perhaps heated or contentious or.
And we did that. We did send last year, this is a year ago now, the Title IX, we sent regulate, board, board policy for Title IX. That would apply whether it was the Biden rules or the, or the, the former rules. And we dealt with the changes in administrative regs. So the board policy was going to be unaffected, but administrative regs, we could tweak as needed depending upon what the court's going to do. That's the kind of approach that we try and take.
Anyone else?
I have a quick question. If we, as a board, continue with Clark Hill, and we find gaps in the policy, what is the cost to come and discuss it with the board and tweak the policy or add a policy or work?
Just go on. If there's, if there's a, we think they're up to date right now. If you think there's a problem, call us, and we'll tell you whether there's a gap or not. If there's a gap, we'll cover it for free. I mean, if there's a gap. It's not, these things are not rocket science, a lot, a lot of these things. They're pretty basic for the most part. But Title IX was, was more of a heavy lift. Did that go?
Yeah, I would say, we've run into situations with districts before where they say, hey, we've had this issue pop up, and we'd like a board policy. And we say, sure, let's talk about it. How can we craft it to make it meet your needs? And we'll just, we'll put together something for you that can be talked about. But that's just a part of flagging and saying, you know, we've, we've got this particular issue that's popped up. Can we put something together? And so we, yeah, we like to have those conversations.
Actually, this one, yeah. Actually, Mary, Mary's working on something right now with a district that has a unique board issue, a board governance issue, that we're dealing with and changing their policy to specifically address that. And we're just charging just the hourly rate for it. It's not like a, it's not, you know, it's, it's, it's a modest cost. So, I know, is that, so basically, our, our philosophy here is that this, this should not be a, we don't think it should be a money maker. So we're just covering our costs of actually complying, making, changing the policies.
Anyone else? No? Well, thank you. Good presentation, very informational, and giving up your beautiful. And giving up your beautiful summer evening. Thank you.
So I got a, I got a board meeting in Cross Lex because that I'm driving to right now. So.
Pull the windows down. Enjoy the scenic ride.
Yeah, exactly. Lot of green, lot of green. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Okay, I need a motion to adjourn to closed session.
Make a motion to adjourn to closed session for 8H to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state federal statutes.
Second, anybody? Motion by Debbie, second by Heidi, to adjourn the closed session. Should we need roll call, please?
LeFrancois?
Yes.
Fortress?
Yes.
Eaton?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Rattie?
Yes.
Enter.
Yes.
...support my money to back to work. He's a motion. Uh, no problem. Yeah. You think? Yes. Do you think? Yes. Better? Fortress? Yes. That?
Yes.
Yes. So, uh, new business?
Madam President?
Yes?
We probably need to make a motion for our fine, our, uh, leaving the, uh, I make a motion to support our attorney with Jimmy Patterson with his letter that he provided to us.
Agreed. Motion right there, second amendment, to support Jimmy Patterson's salary. Brokka, on discussion, intent on brokka. That?
Yes.
For D? Yes. No. Patrick?
Yes.
Fortress?
I'm a no too, because I don't think that's detailed enough.
LaFrenz, please?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes. Motion carries five to two. Uh, new business personnel, athletic coaches.
So we have a, a long meeting, and I hope you appreciate the items that we've kind of put together to one, answer questions, and two, move us forward into some communications tomorrow night. So it was requested that we supply to the Board of Education the fall coaches, or all the coaches that we have, as you can see, we have some TBDs that our athletic directors interviewing for, and, um, and I know he's been in many interviews trying to finalize this up, and, um, so there it is. Those are the coaches. We've given to you the experience that they have for their resume. That's done by Ms. Kales and Ms. Atkins, and then also, um, you can see down here, um, you know, the positions that are open. So we have experienced position category from the contract that we've given you before, and, um, you can see the pay that they receive for all those positions. Those are, those are all determined inside the teacher's contract.
I have to say one more time.
They are all, these, these salaries are all part of the Schedule B in the teacher's contract, so we don't just make it up for anybody. It's, you know, this many years of experience, you get this, this many years of experience, you get this. It's all negotiated.
I do have one question. If for some reason, like, say we don't have JV football, what happens to those coaches? That we just?
They continue, because then you have more coaches at the football level. Really, the JV and varsity all work together to begin with, and so you, um, they split off, and so those are the coaches that would go, and they get paid a little less than the other coaches do, but they will continue to work with the kids.
So we'd have seven total coaches?
Yeah, because they've already been, they've been going all summer long, the coaches have.
I have a question. I know that there's some teachers on here that coach, and then there's some people on here that are not teachers that coach that are making more, um, like the varsity football coach and the varsity, varsity basketball coach. Why are they getting paid more than the teachers?
Because, uh, I'm sorry.
That they've been doing here for a while.
Uh, because they, that area or that athletic event, um, they don't have the experience or the, I mean, it's set by sport by person of experience. So for example, let's just say, I've been teaching here 10 years, but I only have four years of coaching football. Someone that has 25 to 30 years of coaching football is going to get paid at the, at the top. So it's by sport, by your years of experience, coaching, not teaching, coaching.
Okay, I, then I'm a little confused, because the varsity soccer coach was a soccer coach, girl soccer coach, when my daughter went here, and that's been six, seven years ago, and he's making $1,400 less than.
Because varsity football is given a higher salary than a soccer coach for the negotiated agreement, and pretty much per anywhere, because it's a longer period of time, and, uh, that just, those are the salaries that are, that have been put in.
But even the basketball, basketball season doesn't last that long?
These are the negotiated agreements that you all agreed to in the contract when we shared it with you. And so this is pretty typical in what you see in other school districts and how it's set up. Football gets paid the most.
Each sport categorized, one to five, does that help?
And it's been there for, way before us, right? We just tried to up it a little bit in the last several years, but.
How do we determine if a sport gets assistance?
That's a good question. That was one of the things last year that I started having a conversation, because some other sports asked for assistance. Traditionally, the people that had assistance are in the contract, and we talked last year about, um, trying to set up some clear criteria for when people come, so that it, it, listen, football's got all kinds of different parts you have to, and that's a huge safety issue, so you have to have several coaches. But in the other areas, we talked about trying to look to see if other people have a parameter that would help facilitate us understanding who gets a coach and who doesn't.
So is there, so like on the assistance for football, is, is that based on the number of students that are participating?
No, they're, um, that is kind of the set amount you've had. You have, you have to break football down into the various positions, and I have to say, traditionally, football has always had a variety of coaches, because you can't just have one person on the field with that amount of kids, and then separating them into offense, defense, and then...
Suckle team?
Yes, yes. You, you need that to run a football team.
Anybody else?
Uh, organizational chart. Just glad to have that.
Yeah, so, um, this is our first piece on our organizational chart, and you, you can see how, uh, we have broken that down and pulled, um, different positions underneath us, and so some changes to be highlighted is that, um, transportation, food service, and custodial and maintenance this year will reside underneath me, and we will move that to Monica, piece by piece, after an extended period of time, and giving her the time to continue to build, uh, the business department, as well as, uh, do some budget changes in the way we do some things. Um, another change, uh, that, um, occurred, as you can see, Carla Grusly is directly under Teacher Assistant of Teaching and Learning. We had a request to develop this by building. That is not something that's in our capacity at the moment, but we're talking about how we could perhaps put what building principles this year will report to who, um, and then click on that, and it'll click to the building, and you can see the breakdown, you know, by principle, what have you. I want to mind you that that is in our policies, and that is in our, um, uh, our protocol for students, our student handbook, about who goes to where, but we certainly can, can add that. It's just going to take us a little more time, because we're more focused on our budgets and grants at the moment. Any questions about the org chart?
That isn't, that's not going to require a vote.
No, this is not a vote. This is just for your informational. Yeah. It won't come to you next week.
So if I'm reading this correctly, the food service director reports to Greg Richardson? Or the supervisor?
No, they all report to me. All those positions report to me.
Okay. So, so I was going to ask, the early childhood supervisor is under Marlowe's planus? But that's not necessarily.
Oh, no, Heather should be moved over one more under Sis Stephanie, so thank you for pointing that out. Chuck is not.
Well, I was, I was hoping.
A new, a third additional job. Chuck, would you please supervise early childhood? Nope, that's a miss, thank you.
Breaking news. The asbestos person.
Good question. Um, I have that on my desk right now, because Jason was the asbestos person, and I'll need to undergo training to be the top person than him, the Chuck. So I have it on my desk to call and speak with them, to talk about what it entails, and who is at most districts, and go from there.
And the sex education advisor since Dr. Kuzminsky went to.
Dr. Domage will be splitting up that among herself and the teacher leaders, and we'll get back to you on who's going to do that. Wellness will be done by HR. Um, that was already in the wellness job description. So Stephanie, Stephanie, if you look underneath the org chart, under Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, does have post-secondary, she does have, um, the sex ed, the reproductive health and physical education under her job title there.
Okay. Anyone else? Uh, non-union pay increase.
Great. Um, so we went through and, uh, went ahead and did, uh, the 3% increases. Uh, given in this time and the amount of activity that central office and other people did, we put 3%, and it's figured into our savings and cuts that I'll share with you earlier. And so I split up the administrators and the central office staff. I figured that might be something for a conversation for you guys, but this first, uh, amount is 3%. You can see what they're paid this year with what a 3% increase would be, and 25, 26 pay. We did look out there, and a market, general market increases in the educational field across the country is 3% to 6%. And I would garner that some of those 6% are because people were behind, and they couldn't get staff, and they had to increase to get staff. It is difficult to keep your staff intact, so I encourage you to consider, um, making sure that our, our people are compensated, um, for the next school year.
Comments?
Um, I'm, I'm just going to be honest. I'm a no on this. We can't get, I mean, you want us to make a decision on this, and we're running at a deficit based on the information we've received. I just think it's an irresponsible decision to give raises when we don't even know where we stand.
Well, we certainly have an update for you, and we'll be speaking with you, um, at a later time in the meeting. This is, this is for a vote next week, but thank you for that.
I don't even think it should be a vote.
I also share.
It will be a vote. It'll be a vote next week, but this is Committee of the Whole. It's just time for you to ask more questions and information you might need.
I thought it was also to say what moves forward and what doesn't.
Oh, you certainly could decide for something not to move forward, but I would highly encourage us to move forward our salaries for our staff.
Even if it might end up with no's, I, I'm a no on it also. When we have the deficit that we have, um, districts aren't giving raises, we have a President of the United States that's cutting all kinds of, of school money. Uh, it's just not the right time, and we gave 4%, we gave 5%, now we're back to 3%. These people are not in classrooms, they're not eye to eye. As, on part of the deficit in 2015, we didn't spend any money. We didn't give any raises. We had 169 people that lost jobs, and our.
In 2010, you mean, before, or 2014, before I started?
Yes. But our budget, I looked at it today online, anybody can look under transparency, in '23, '24, we had $5,977, I believe it was, in the fund balance. Now that $5 million in the fund balance is gone, and we have $2 million and something in deficit. So I think that the financial, at this time, it's just not feasible, so.
I think it's also important to not have people want to leave us. I mean, when you look at it, 13,000 over the whole year. One of them are grant-funded, so we don't even have to worry about that, which is wonderful. But to look at keeping people here and not having them go elsewhere, and having to rehire that spot at potentially even more of a cost if we lose someone that's already here good at a low cost?
I, I want to also share with you that, um, we have cuts and pieces that we'll be sharing with you, and then looking for other things that you've done that will bring us to a, a fund balance, um, going through, and there's also a change that we believe with, uh, other documents that have come in, that we will not have. When audit's complete, it will not be a zero, uh, fund balance. So just want to say that we've put in the work. Administration has given up, um, positions. Chuck has taken on other positions, so that we can make sure that our people get raises, because, uh, every position is just equally as important as a teacher, because without these people, the teachers can't teach. So, I mean, and I appreciate, it's my job to support and fight for our, our, our staff.
I respect your, I respect that, and I respect what Monica says, but I also think, like, last year when we gave her 5%, that set of precedents, that all the unions wanted 5%. They were very, very clear on that, and I believe the teachers' union is up again this year. We're going to.
They already got 3%, so this is, our teachers are getting 3%. Our paraprofessionals are getting 3%. Our custodians are getting 3%. We have to negotiate secretaries and GSRP, because they're forming a new union, and so this is just giving those people that have done extra work, and again, we've given up positions where we're doing extra work. It's giving them 3%, which is, and our salary's already far less.
So to help me understand, the 3% is, the teachers are getting it for, for this school year coming up?
Yes, the teachers, everybody, we traditionally, and certainly this board can change it, everybody got the same raise. We did not give different raises, and so everybody got 5% last year, and this is just continuing so that everybody gets 3% this year. Then we will negotiate, and in that time, when it comes time to negotiate in February, March, we will know differently about what is happening. I'm not panicking about all the conversation that people are having out there about cuts, because I know some of those, those portions that we have, so for example, we've already gotten our Title I. I was on with, uh, legislatures today. Title I and special ed is not being cut, it's funded at the same level for this upcoming school year. We, Title II, III, and IV is still not determined, doesn't mean that it's gone, and that's 150,000 for Hazel Park schools. Um, and so I, also, we've done a tremendous amount of cuts, which we will share to you that are suggested, and then we'll be asking you to share your cuts, which will find us in a, in a, at least zero or a positive fund balance for, uh, the end of '25, '26, and that'll be our job all year long. And that is with the 3% increases for these individuals.
Can you correct me if I'm wrong? When we talked last year about the 5%, didn't we make mention of this 3% then, too?
In the, in the contracts that we're negotiating, so the teachers were given 5, and then 3, and we purposely, 3 is pretty standard of a raise in the educational field right now, and we are quite stabilized, and so that's why we took their steps, so that we knew that at least they could get a step every year and get a 3% raise. Um, I'm sure that they'll negotiate more. Health costs are going to go up, other things are going to go up, but right now, we're just trying to equalize this to our staff that are very well-deserving of a 3% raise.
I just think it's very irresponsible of a district that's in deficit. Madison Heights came out, and they have their plan all in place for their freezing pays and, um, stuff, and we're just.
I, I.
Spending and giving raises.
Ms. Fortress, I would absolutely agree. This plan should have been done in February. Unfortunately, it wasn't, and we have a plan in place. We are not going to be in deficit at the end of the '23, '24 school year, and so I want to make sure that that's held to the community and to you guys as well, that.
We were told that last year, too, when we were giving out 5% raises, that we want to be in the position that we are in now, and we are in this position.
We are, we're not in deficit.
So what does the public perceive when they read a budget on our transparency page that says we're $2 million in deficit?
It's a budget? It's, sorry, uh, I apologize.
No, that, that's okay. It's putting the cart before the horse. You can put it on the agenda, the board can vote and decide, um, next week. I think it's irresponsible. We have Oakland schools coming in right now to help us. We're going to be looking at, at somebody else coming in to help us. We're on the watch list for the Department of Treasury, Michigan Department of Treasury. It seems like magic that in a month, we're not going to have a deficit. That's just hard to work with when we have, we have to make a, a monthly report to the Michigan Department of Treasury. It, in fact, I have a letter that says that they. they predicted the next two years, we were a stressed school district that would be looking at deficit. That's in Michigan Department of Treasury. It's in writing that that's what we can possibly be looking at. So I just do not see raises at this time.
A stressed district means that you're under 5% of a fund balance. And we've been there before, and, and we have a piece in place to speak with you today and other areas for you to look at that will bring items in line and move us in the right direction.
I have a quick question. So this says that it would be effective July 1st?
Yes.
So if we postpone this, till we get the results of the audit, till whatever, whatever, they will still get that money effective July 1st if we vote on this and say it in October? They just don't get it right now? They just owe them back pay?
You certainly could. We, we did that one year when we were moving ourself out of deficit. We waited until, we didn't wait till the audit. We just waited until state aid came through and what the state was giving us. That, that certainly can be the will of the board.
I think that would be a better, because then by the, the state doesn't even have their budget then still. So I'm not saying it's going to be cut or it's going to be more, it's going to be less. I'm just saying that since it's not even in, I think that we should not vote on any raises right this second or next week because then if we wait a little while, maybe more answers from outside entities would be available. And we can see what is going to be actually happening as opposed to guessing.
What would be the harm next week to table the item, the, the two items until after we receive the audit? And then that way, it's always on the agenda and not forgotten about.
I mean, you certainly, as a board, can make the decision. What I'm saying with this amount and with all the cuts that we are presenting to you, that this increase is figured in here. And these are individuals that are having to pay for higher costs, and it is a very small raise. It is also why I separated administration from the individuals that make a significant less amount of money, because I thought that there might be an either/or situation for you, so that those people that are hourly employees could go ahead and get their raise, and then maybe administration who make a little bit more money would, could wait until that time if you so chose to. But as I said, we'll have a plan in place to show you. And then at the August meeting as well, we will have an update about where we are from some of the work that, that we've been doing as well.
Well, we have some food for thought. We'll put it that way until next Monday.
Right.
Are the...
It's good discussion. We're having good discussions.
Is anything included in A3, A4, and A, I shouldn't say anything, any people included in A3, A4, and A5, subject to the increased costs in their health insurance?
There are no increases in health insurance yet.
Okay.
So I asked Mrs. Cales that today. We'll hear about that in August. But I was on, again, with Elizabeth Shockin today, and she said we can guarantee that in November, that with the changes that are in the big beautiful bill, or whatever the name of it is, that everybody, every one of us around this table will get increases in health costs across the board that's going to come with that. So, but we still have an amount that's, you know...
End of August is what, is what the...
But then, then, let me clarify that again. But then in November, no matter what your costs are, you will most likely see another raise that will happen immediately with this. I don't know if that's true or not. That's what's in the big beautiful bill. Did I say that right? Beautiful bill.
It is certainly a bill.
That, we have the same thing for the central office pay increases and on the next one. And they are 3% raises. Carla's is covered totally in the community schools grant. It is, she specifically stated in that, in order to run community schools, you have to have a community school and director. And so we, in the grant, put in for 3% raises. We didn't hire our people earlier, so they didn't get 3% raises, other than Brooke, who's been here several years. There also is an include for Crystal to increase hers more than 3% to the 92,000, which is below the average and at the average across salaries. So if you have 300 to 500 people working for you, the average is 91.5. If you are 50 million budget, the average is 95. If you have numbered students, 22,000 to 5,000, it's 91. And if you are in metro Detroit, the average is 108. And so 95 brings her a little closer into what a K-12 business manager would be making, given, again, I would say that all of these people have stepped up and done a tremendous amount of job and work for us, especially over the last five months.
What percentage is 5,000? I think I figured out, but I used...
I didn't do it.
My scribbles on this, I think it's like 5.6.
It is, but it brings her up into line with what we promised as she's finished a, one program with MSBO, her business manager certificate. And she's in her second year with the ISD under Terry Lees, actually, who came out to visit our school, and then is finishing her master's degree as well.
I was considering pulling her off this because she would be the one I would give right now, since she didn't get it last year because she was new and, and she's done so much schooling. I don't know if we can do that for one. And now I'll rest, but...
Would you like me to put that separate from these next week?
I think so.
For what's that?
For Crystal's.
I'm just saying that would be one I would consider voting yes on because she didn't get it last year, and she's finished all the schooling, or not all, she hasn't finished all this one, but she's finished a lot of the schooling.
Maybe put that separate. Also, on the one for the non-union, you have the security guards in there too?
No, this is separate. That's, that's the next motion.
Okay, but it's still on the one.
Yeah, it says at the bottom.
In the little paragraph at the bottom, it says we are also seeking an increase for security guards.
Hold on. The letter for the non-union pay increase?
Yes.
That should come off. That's in the next motion.
So that should come off.
Thank you. We'll remove that off because that motion, that increase is on the next.
Okay. That was a little confused when I was reading it yesterday.
Why is Webster's principal, Webster supervisor not included with the rest of the school administrators?
Because it was a supervised position. It used to be a position that wasn't even an administrator, and we moved that into administrator, and we started paying it. And so it's being paid as a principal. It's just not in the union. And I'm sure they'd be happy to take it in the union if we mentioned it, I guess.
Are we all sit there? Are we?
I hear my direction is to bring that back, but bring Crystal separate in a separate motion, so we'll add that.
Okay. So we're on buildings and grounds?
No, we're on changes to non-union contract.
That's what she just said about the security.
No, there was a, there was a note on the original one that says non, so the union, the, this is, is in, this is, wow, is approving the non-union contract, which would include the vendors having a 3% raise. A reminder that vendors is MCA and Invest, and they both approve this. This comes out of their dollars. So their state aid comes in, and we pay their teachers and, or their staff, and this comes out of their dollars. So it's not changing. It just takes more dollars away from them. And then the security guards, we stepped it up into a step four, and then just increased the starting salary just a little bit. We're really struggling to get security guards, and so we're hoping that this will help us a little bit. If you remember, we used to have the same rate for all security guards, and then they were upset that if somebody came in, they've been here for a while. So we decided to add, Christine added that fourth step.
Since, since the vendor affiliate alternative staff is paid by MCA and Invest, can we have those on a separate item too? Because that doesn't affect us.
Well, we could, let me think about how to do that because that's within our non-union contract, and it is our employee. So just let me think about that a little bit, how to do that, because this is the change. You're voting to change our non-union contract. If you remember, when I came, there was no non-union contract, and we developed this over time. And they're part of that in this contract. So let me think about how to separate the two. The only amounts, and it used to be GSRP is in here, but GSRP has requested to form a union, and so we'll be negotiating with GSRP and associate teachers.
Okay, are we good? All right, buildings and grounds, and the first thing is the web building.
Yes, so we, this is done, or being done shortly. And we talked with you guys about this before, and we brought it forth. It is not a mandatory bring to you. But again, that's that small P, which is our practice that we do. And that practice is, it's over 5,000 we bring to you, so that you're aware of it. It may very well be that we can put this in the sinking fund. As a matter of fact, I believe we can. There'll be dollars to go in here, and it would be an appropriate sinking fund cost.
Questions? As for the pipe, is that for the pipe?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, summer work updates.
Okay, you have in front of you a document with the summer work, and what we tried to do is Greg is out coaching softball, so I can't, so he can't be here. So we went through all the items that has been done. So just giving you a quick update at board, we're about 70% completed. The gym floor has been redone. You can look in there. It looks beautiful. Mulch has been added to the outdoor areas, and we've ordered ceiling tiles to be replaced in all of the buildings. We still also need to do backflow prevention maintenance for the year, which is a mandated thing by our cities that we have to complete. Advantage, it's clean over there, and ceiling tiles are going to be replaced. At the high school, they're about 70% complete. Both gyms have been refinished. We're starting, we've had some air conditioning repairs that needed to be finished. Mulch is going to be added out there as well. There are some finalized things for the doors that need to be replaced, and that'll be done on August 2nd, and then we'll have that final payout out to them. Ceiling tiles, we've replaced the carpet in the athletic office. It should have been replaced when the fire took place in there, and it was not.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Sounds like we didn't do it when we had the fire.
No, they did not. And it was quite disgusting. So I did get that replaced as well. And then, of course, we have backflow. Let's see. Then we have, the next one is the junior high. We've had some air conditioning concerns over there that have had to be replaced as well. And the auxiliary gym was done. Next year, the main floor would be done. The roof and boiling repairs are needed, so we're going to have to look to cost that. We just cannot seem to stop that junior high roof from leaking, and so we may have to do a larger repair on that, which I believe we'll have some sinking fund dollars when we talk to you about what we need to do. Bev, do you need some water? She just took a cough drop. Hey Jimmy, maybe in Jamie's office, water? He's going to bring you a drink. No. I'm going to just keep talking while you're coughing. And so we're going to have to have some boiler repairs done. Also, the second floor of the junior high, the tile is lifting that was just put in. And so Greg has called the installation company out to repair that. And then our teachers are moving all over the place. And so we did make an agreement to give some hours for the teachers to move their items, given the new teaming process. Everybody had to move. And so they are given the opportunity for us to pack them up, not meaning us, but meaning our custodial and maintenance, and/or come in and get paid a set number of hours in order to do, so I think it was up to four hours, that we made an agreement with the union. And they were very pleased to do that. The boiler repairs were started last week and about to be completed, and then the backflow. At Webb, we have about $5,800 worth of concrete repair that needs to be done. That too could be taken out of the sinking fund. The basement repair invoice you've received, the gym floor will be done next year. They're about 50% completed at Webb. Mulch is going to be blown in. I think they were there today, starting to blow in the mulch. Ceiling tiles need to be replaced. And then we have, as part of SETSEG, they'll be doing an inspection to our playground, and then, of course, backflow inspection. Then at Hoover, they're 70% complete.
Can we stop? So many questions. Sorry.
Yes, sorry.
What kind of concrete work is being completed?
It's not being completed because we haven't given that to you yet. We're saying it needs, we have an estimate of $5,800 worth of concrete. We have about $25,000 worth of concrete across the district that they went around and checked where things really need to be completed. We're waiting for the sinking fund amount to bring to you to do that. Wanted to see where it was.
Where is it at?
I don't know where it is at Webb. I have to be, I am not, I did not go with him. He had him walk around. Gym floor at Hoover, mulch. No major building projects are scheduled for the summer at Hoover. I would like to consider that if we have sinking fund to go ahead and work on replacing that sign. I know that was our next one, and so it would be nice to do that step that we talked about in the sinking fund. Insurance for playground inspections and backflow. Mulch will be added, an air conditioner motor was placed, ceiling tiles were replaced, and that was at United Oaks. Webster, clean, no major repairs. Ceiling tiles and backflow, you can see the same thing. There's about $15,000 worth of concrete that has to be repaired at Edison. I'm not sure where that is either. Neighbor complained about a trail that was, used to have rocks in there, and that was causing a slippery hazard to walk through. Greg actually took the trail away, and we're seeding grass at that point because we removed the rocks, given the fact that the kids were throwing them. And so we removed rocks from all of our playgrounds at Edison. Our John, Dardan, work is going to be complete. We met today with the swing installation, and actually John Davids did a drawing for free for us there. We are going to have to spend $5,000 to $8,000 to prepare the ground inside, as opposed to, originally, they were talking about putting concrete in and a fence, which would have been about 20 grand outside. So we're going to do inside. I will have a quote for you next week on what it's going to take, because as soon as that gets in, the swing will finally be placed in, and then they'll blow mulch.
Is this a swing from 18 months ago to two years ago?
Yeah, it was last summer that was purchased. It seemed longer to me because I was frustrated. But I met with them in January, and we had a plan, and unfortunately, nothing went forward because I wasn't able to move forward on that plan.
When you say inside, do you mean inside the courtyard?
In the courtyard, yes. And we're taking, we're going to have to, so there's a berm inside that courtyard in the back, so we would take that berm down and move it towards the area where the, the concrete is. We'll have to cut out a little piece of concrete because there, concrete there is side, and then he has to dig it on one foot, and there'll be a black mesh that'll go around, and then we'll blow one foot of mulch in there. As soon as we get it cut through free, then they'll come and put it in immediately. So my goal is for that to be done before the beginning of the school year is really our push. At Invest, partners are planning, partners and architect did a design, unbeknownst to me, for a soccer field as well as a tennis court. Also, they did for a science lab and the greenhouse that hasn't been put up from almost two years ago. And so Greg is working to try to see if we can find someone to put the greenhouse up this summer with the cost. And then partners and architect did design a soccer field. I don't believe we have the dollars to install a tennis court at this point in time, but we certainly could look at costing out, getting that soccer field done. They were told that it would be done with COVID dollars. Those COVID dollars are long gone, and so at least moving forward would be appropriate. It would cost 180 to do, 80,000 to do the science room that was drawn out. So at least getting that soccer field and the, and the greenhouse would be a good step this summer.
Can I ask a question on that?
Sure.
I know back when I first started on the board, we talked about removing the playground equipment that is attached to that Invest Roosevelt School District, as it's unsafe. And it's still there.
That's where the soccer field will go, and so that's part of the removal. Our guys will take the equipment out.
So since it's an old slide, I'm going to say from the 70s, maybe even the 60s, there's no guards or anything. If someone falls on that, is the school liable for it?
SETSEG will be going around and making, so I think it would depend on, I don't know what the claims would be, Jimmy, from before, if it was there before different rules were put in place, or, you know, I would really have to talk to SETSEG about that for liability of that.
So we would, we would receive the same protection that we would have received 10, 20 years ago, but governmental, we have a piece that's still in effect. It could be considered grant on it, even though it's probably hazardous. SETSEG will have included that in their evaluations historically because they do inspections and they look at that. You can be sued by anybody.
Yeah.
Do I, do I recommend leaving some hazardous piece of equipment or something that you look at some of the older pictures that could be perceived as hazardous that don't meet today's standards? No, I wouldn't recommend that we, we keep that because you look at the equipment, we probably all play on at some point.
And that equipment that I played on is still at my elementary school, who has new buildings being built. I just, I would want SETSEG to give us the guidance on whether it's out of standard or not. While we might think it's out of standard, they may not. I can't say that they do or they don't, but I, we haven't had SETSEG come in, although we talked about it several times. They are in process of doing that right now.
And so would they out invest after that was done?
They're doing all of, yes.
All of those.
Yeah.
And Wednesday, they're coming in in August, you said, before school starts coming, right?
Greg, I can't answer that. Greg is working with them to bring them in. Jamie, I don't know if you can answer that, if that's been.
He just said it's being scheduled. He's waiting on the callback with the schedule.
Because Jamie is acting as his support secretary as well.
It would depend if it's been well maintained. It would be conditioned.
I think it's no different than some of the slides we see in our parks here in Hazel Park.
I have a question. You have a lot of repairs there, air conditioning, so forth, boilers, roofs. What's the, is a train coming in?
So we haven't moved forward on our energy bond conversation with all of you because we were waiting to get some of the budgetary things cleared out. We have to walk in the right direction. And in order to do that, you use some of your sinking fund. And so until we got a handle on where our closeout was for the end of the year, we did not move forward on our conversation with Train. You know, it would have been pleasurable for Train to get that approved in June. We're now going to be looking at August to have a conversation with them or even October. So if they did something, it would probably be the next summer. And I, also, at some point in time, we'll talk about the board's will to look at a bond. But if you remember, it was Portrait of a Graduate being finished, which we now have to push out till September, October. Then from there, developing a strategic plan and from there, having conversations around to develop that strategic plan, what things need to be done. And so we are looking at the next drop in our property taxes happening in 2026, 2027. And so we would look for a bond in 2027 to go along with those drops to not, you know, increase property taxes to get about $110 million bond. And we'll talk about that at another time, but all of the air conditioning and things would go with that and with Train. But you have to pay for this, it's not free.
No, but I thought we voted to give them money.
No, we did not. We, the only thing that we did is we worked with them, but there's been no vote for Train. They haven't come back yet. They presented what an energy bond looks like.
Right. And I thought it came back because we were, originally it was like virtually no cost based on the savings and then if we gave them some money.
We did not.
We could do more or something.
Yes, if you, you're absolutely correct how it works, but we did not make a vote or make a plan. We have some stuff that they worked on, but we didn't do that.
We discussed knowing that there's really some HVC and other building needs, if we were able to commit $2 million of the sinking fund, of future dollars, how much they'd be able to get done, but we have not revisited that.
So we did have that discussion, I'm not. It wasn't a vote. It was okay.
No, and we have not brought anything, they came and presented to you, but we didn't present anything yet. I don't think that was done at a board meeting where we talked about the $2 million at all.
No, it was.
It might have been a side conversation.
There was a discussion, but it was not an agenda item that we were.
We didn't vote on that, it was just a discussion. Okay. I'm like, I know, I remember it.
We definitely want to look at that, but we need to make sure that we know where our sinking fund is and what projects we also have coming up that are going to have to be done. And we're going to have to leave money in the sinking fund for air conditionings, roofs, and boilers because they're dying in the district. We knew that.
All right, great report, thank you.
I'll thank Greg and Jamie who sat with me a couple of times to go through that.
That was very informative, very good. Jardon Air Conditioning, that's next.
So we have a bond in there, or a, sorry, a quote in there for you for 18-5. He's working on some others. This is air conditioning for one room that needs the air conditioning for our students of special needs. When you run a center program, you are expected to keep your buildings up with the carryover dollars that come through. So that's why you keep that percentage fund balance, 9% fund balance that you have, because those dollars are expected to do items that need to keep upgraded for the students in that program. We do have the fund balance, appropriate fund balance and the specialized fund for that. However, what would happen just then is you just get less monies that could be carried over into the general fund of the district. And so, Nate, you're looking at me, so I'm just going to make sure that I'm explaining this well. We get, we charge this amount for the center fund that goes through Oakland County, then it comes back through P-18 funds and then we say, this is how much the program costs us. And so the extra dollars, you have to have a certain amount in a fund reserved for any work that needs to be done and then the rest of that can come into our general fund. So you make, you know, we charge some building and operations and maintenance and such. So the, what just happens is the fund that we have that might have had 9%, might have 8% and we have to bring it back up to date the following year to the 9% and that means less money would just come to the general fund in the following year. Special ed finance is not fun.
Oakland schools, they put aside a certain amount in their budget for renovations and because we've asked for them, for the bathrooms at Jardon that they get done, but.
Yes.
Since that's a smaller amount, we can't go to them for the air conditioning because we have center fund money that's expected to keep up the building.
When we went to them before, they said we have center fund money and we're expected and oftentimes those renovations are for new program development. So for example, a few years ago, Lake Orion opened their own ASD program and they had dollars to help them open their own program.
So it wouldn't cover air conditioning? That was, like, could we get a little extra?
We can only hope.
Financing.
Well, the next is ACRAS School Improvement. So, correct, did I miss it?
She just went to see financing.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Finance, yeah.
Yeah. So ACRAS, ACRAS is the organization that has helped us develop a three-year, long-term plan that we can now use the system with three years of data that's in there to look at specific students' growth and areas of growth. We signed a long-term contract with them, which is $22,000 for the school improvement data analytics side and $5,000 for our strategic dashboard that's on our website. And so this is, I put the contract in there because I thought there might be questions about that, but it was, the long-term contract was approved by the Board of Education.
Was this last year or first year with, working with them?
Yes, but we were able to get our year before data, so we have the three years now. So it really is going to be active and strong for us to be pulling some really good analytics from there.
Okay.
So is this, no, I do have a question. Is this $22,000 a year? Because this says renewal, right? We recommend you renew it. So it's $22,000 to renew it?
It is 20, yes, the $22,000 is the data analytics system and it's quite in-depth with data that you can pull by teacher, by student, by building. And then the strategic dashboard is $5,000 that puts the dashboard up on our website. So yes.
Okay. Anybody else? No? Summer school extended day activities?
I'm going to just keep going. These are all things that were approved in the grant or paid for by grant dollars and fortunately, unfortunately, they didn't come for approval. And so when they came to me to sign the agreements, I said, that needs to go to the board. They're just going to the board for approval next week. However, this is totally grant funded by the Discovery Grant. But it's large and I knew you would look at the check register, Debbie, and say, what was that? What was that $22,000 payment?
I thought you were telling me about my job.
So I'm just trying to get ahead of you with your questions.
I still might have asked and I probably won't remember.
And I'll tell you to refer to C2 of Committee of the Hall, which is easier than writing it out.
Keep on going, I guess.
The next one is just the Great Start Readiness. We just continue to participate in this Great Start Readiness program. There were some questions, right? How money is given to us based upon our numbers of allocations they're giving? And then mid-year, we have it on our schedule to do an update to see how many students we actually have to make sure that we don't get dollars that we're going to have to give back. So you saw in the check register dollars that we had to give to them because they overpaid us because we didn't have full classrooms and we tend to not have full classrooms. And so we'll be looking at utilizing some of our other four-year-old paid tuition classrooms to try to move them to GSRP to fill those classrooms up.
I was just going to say, which one is more beneficial to us financially if we put the kids in GSRP or the ones that we run?
Yes. So when I say yes, yes, GSRP, no one has to pay for it. But oftentimes, some of our preschool academy are DHS and so then we get reimbursement for them as well. So that's why I said yes. There's a, there's a balance that goes into play there.
It says in here that we must maintain a budget for them. I'm just kind of curious if we can possibly see what the budget was last year and see how much, what happens in the GRSP program?
Sure. We have a budget that we have to turn into the ISD and I thought we might have given that to you last year in a grant. We can go back and look. It's updated several times throughout the year.
Go on to number four.
That's our FMX renewal. If you remember, we got rid of School Dude, which was more expensive and FMX does more things that I hope that we start to utilize even greater and that is it has inventory. We do some of the inventory that's on there. It is fixed so that people can, they just needed to follow the right directions, which is if you are an outside organization, you have to make an account, just like you did with School Dude in order to do that. And so I asked Brad to clarify that a little bit more on the website and I hope that helped. But we would encourage us to do this renewal and we will continue to even increase the amount of usage for this.
So this is where the outside organizations go to sign up to use the building?
And inside, and asset tracking. And then we'll move on to equipment tracking as well, which we need to do per our title grants.
So just for the people out there, they have to make their own account through this with Hazel Park School, I'm assuming?
You can see, they've got to use their own email and you'll see there's two different ways. If you have a Hazel Park email, then you go one way. If not, then you have to create your own using your personal email.
Just to add to it, I believe it also includes work orders for the tech department and for the custodial department.
Absolutely correct.
I can see Brad over there, I can read his mind, but yeah, it also includes that and they probably can get a percentage of what was done, what was broken, that kind of stuff, which would be nice.
Yes, and I can see all of it happening as well on the calendar. So if I want to look and see how many work orders have been done, I can go in there and look at that. When teachers complain, I've had this list in there forever. I can also go in there and see when the dates were.
School Dude didn't have that, did it?
Not to this effect. And many people have moved away from this. When I was at home, I, this came up and a lot of people are transitioning to FMX from School Dude.
Well, for about five years, or four years, Brad saved money for the district and we got a free, well, not free, it was free at first, but then we paid like $2,000 a year to have this program do the same thing, but it was very limited to what you could do. So, you know, you can look back and say, okay, we actually saved money from previous years.
And this is also a renewal?
It is a renewal.
Isn't it, is it $10,000?
Yes.
Yes.
Everything's so expensive.
Everything's expensive.
Okay, number five, SETSEG insurance.
We added in here for today, for your preview, and I'm not sure if it's at the table, the renewal invoice for SETSEG so that you can see. While the renewal did go up, we will get 12-5 for members in good standing. So if you pay on time, you get a little of the assets back. And so this, again, insurance is going up over and over again, so.
I have a couple of questions on this. On the sheet that was attached to it, it said 2025 coverage changes and under property it says therapy dog, accidental death. Isn't that in the handbook that the owner has to provide that?
That's if it was a district therapy dog, not an individual that owned it. I don't know how that would work.
Yeah, so I actually, I do. You have to have, as part of being, you have to have your own insurance. And so for example, Rocky's covered under my property insurance, that he's covered under that. So it'd be a personal liability insurance.
So why do we have therapy dog insurance?
That's, that's part of what they offer. So if we owned, like Lampier owns the dogs themselves and so it would cover under there. And I think they've added that.
So these aren't changes to our district, these are just changes in general?
They're, yes, she was giving you information, Monica was giving you information on what SETSEG does.
They would provide, if we had therapy dogs, they would provide that additional coverage as part of our policy and that was new this year that they put in.
Okay, so I thought, I was under the assumption when you gave this to us, that this is what the changes were into our policy.
That's what they change, what they cover in their policy. Probably, quite frankly, it would be a cost to us because they don't separate out like, you know, oh, only Hazel Park doesn't need the dog policy. It's part of what they offer in their policy as a whole. But we don't have that because we don't own any dogs.
How large is this invoice?
It's in there for you?
I did not see the invoice.
Oh, I'm sorry, we didn't copy it. So this invoice is huge. It is $373,654 and last year was 393, or, yeah, 390.
No, I'm not talking, I mean page-wise, so that we can look at the actual invoice.
It's just one page. We, it's been uploaded into board books.
Please, you have a respect for that?
Yeah, I noticed today that the invoice wasn't in there for you to look at and I didn't think that, I figured you wouldn't want that, so.
I'm just curious, this, so this one is different. This says it's 372. What did you say?
Okay, so the invoice here, hold on, now I got to find it again. The renewal invoice is, before our discount, is 393, 320. The cost is 373, 654 with the discounts because we're in a pool. And then we will get $12,585 back if we pay this on time.
And that was 372, 614, which is what this says?
The reason for the $1,000 difference is there was a line for builder's risk, which is something we're required, but that was for doing the bathroom, bathroom upgrades, which is done, is completed. So they removed that from the, from the policy.
So it'd be 373, 654 minus 1,040 minus $12,584.
I understand. Is this bottom line, 372, 614, not correct?
It is correct, just the invoice doesn't have builder's risk off.
Okay, so this is the amount we're paying, 372, 614?
Yep. And it's certainly, I think that might be something that we look at. We went into SETSEG 10 years ago when Dan Ramza came in and it brought down our costs. Unfortunately, one thing that causes us to have a greater cost is the fact that we have many people that get injured in our special ed programs.
This is not workers' count in this stuff.
This doesn't include workers' count in this cost. So I'm just curious, like, they say you should review your, like, your own personal insurance every three to five years or something because insurance companies just raise, raise, and raise, and raise, and raise, and you hold that one for years until they raise ridiculously high. Is that the same for like this type of insurance? Should we be looking to see if we can find a cheaper?
Yeah, I think we're due to go out for bid and see what our options are. Prior to doing that, I'm going to be meeting with our agent in, I think, August and we're going to look at our deductibles and different levels and see if we should make any adjustments
I think that was kind of what I said earlier and I apologize if it didn't come clear is that in all of our items, it's time for us, like, you're going to want to look at your auditor and go it out. That's what we did when I first started 10 years ago, is we looked at all the different areas and bid them out to look for ways to save.
The next is enrollment cap for the MBCA.
Right, so MBCA is, all charter schools or online schools are finding that their enrollment is increasing. And so this is a request to increase by 400 students and to give a superintendent the ability to make that decision and not just say, if in these line items, you know, we're going to go here, but to give me the ability to do increases as appropriate. That also, though, ties to a rubric that we have them fill out that shows their improvement plan that puts in place and so we'll bring that back and show you. So this is all on Monday. We still have to do that rubric, but it's really, they need to enroll for August 1st. So our hope is to increase that. And that'll be extra dollars for us as well.
So you're going to be giving us Schedule 7 and the Schedule 13? Or the Schedule 13 is the increase?
Schedule, Attachment A is the increase. And then the other is going to be, I have to go have a look at that. The amendment will include a revision, which is the current educational goals. So I will be doing that with them, and I'll give them to you when they finish them. But they won't be finished for this. Part of the agreement is, is that we will do that.
So shouldn't it be broke out then?
No.
So we're approving something that's not even completed?
You're approving the increase of the students and with the additional piece that they have to do educational goals with us, which they have to do anyway. You wouldn't approve the educational goals.
So do they currently have educational goals?
They do, they have a long-range plan and a three- to five-year plan. And then they have a packet that they do every year, which is really great. That's the state of, in state of MBCA that shows all the things that they do to support kids.
And how much, what's the percent we get from them?
3%. So I believe this year it was six, something, 650?
These students don't count in our student aid.
They do not. We get 3% of the student aid to support them.
Okay, are we good? All right, number seven, financial reductions.
Okay, I'm looking for that document. You have a document in front of you that looks like this. Before we get started on this document, I want to say to you that this document includes $4.2 million of reductions, $823,000 worth of increases. And separating the reductions that were done before, on this document is $2.1 million of reductions that be put in place. We also, again, as I was trying to state earlier, that we've had dollars that have come in in the meantime. And next month, we'll have a better feel for you about where those dollars are, especially as they're working with the auditors and such as well. But we do not believe that we are at deficit at this point in time, given the dollars that have come in the meantime. So with that being said, there'll be similar, a little bit adjustment. You can see up at the front, it said that the deficit projected is 2.4 million. Remember, that's a rollover. That's not, you know, while Monica has been working with that, she may chime in on here if I breeze so that someone can speak, that this won't be 2.4. But there's also gims and flows with this. So you can look here, we already talked with you about the change in the loan interest, which is a reduction of $220,000 in the budget. We talked about the audit fees, which we have, you know, an audit in place. And so that's $60,000 in change in fees. Then the tune fees for the investigation, a reduction of $56,000 in fees. And then Stephanie has removed some professional development from ARC. As a matter of fact, in some of the things from ED Week and such, you will see that a lot of districts are cutting their professional development and their training on science of reading, which is a large concern. So hopefully, there'll be some state grants that come through for science of reading to add those in. But we've been training, we're ahead of the game a little bit, so this is a reduction. That interim superintendent in business was $160,000 that we've reduced. Patel for kids, $38,000, it's removed from this year's budget. $10,000 for UK RU. The power school expense, a reduction of $32,000. One of the varsity assistant coaches, $5,000. And combination of athletics and communication, $100 grand. Now, as we move further down, some of these are new and some of these are not. So please say, Amy, if you want me to, because you have a question. The K-12 supervisors reduced out of teaching and learning. This is an all-in salary, which is different than it was before. So this is included, all benefits and everything from, is $133,785.82. So that changed. And again, I want to remind you that there's not less to do, there's more to do. And we're just bringing it back onto our plates to try to get us through this time. The assistant superintendent secretary, which was all-in, 67, she made $67,523.90, that's with benefits and everything. That's, position has been eliminated. Two PE teachers at the middle school, they only need one in their schedule that they have set up. So I took the exact salary of the teachers that left, $155,907, $174. And I want to remind for the audience, if you're listening, that this is benefits and retirement. Retirement is a huge cost for school districts as well. Then one of our instructional coaches at the high school retired. This is her actual salary and benefits of $169,558. Then one advantage elementary teacher, $123,542.92. We changed VVA at the high school to be a para. So the teacher made $148,843, all-in. And then the, you can see on the other side is an increase because the para will make $32,434, all-in. Tammy's retirement, $228,276 was her total salary. And then down below, you see Georgia's salary on the left, all-in is $207,472. And it's a difference of 20, so then you can see the savings on the right. Carla Beach, $204,388. And then you can see a savings of $3,000 from what George was at, because George had some longevity and other pay that was in place. The difference between Kaminsky's salary and Beach's is a $7,000 increase. She has her doctorate, and so that changes the salary there. So that's an increase. We reduced one science teacher, we will be reducing one science teacher at the high school per Tammy and per class sizes, that's $164,124. We also reduced a social studies, that teacher was moved, teacher was moved to the junior high. So we reduced a salary, added salary at the junior high, and then took out the retiring teacher from social studies, which was $86,000. So we saved at the high school, but we added on to the junior high. We reduced a Webster para. We also reduced junior high. These are the office paras. The Webster felt that they could do without an office para, given, and so did the junior high. So they, that was a reduction they gave. And then the $34,000 is the central office increase for administrators, you see on the left. District subs, this is a conversation to think about. We have paid our district subs at the beginning, teacher salary rate, and then also gave them benefits as well as retirement. Moving them to edge of staff, which would mean that we wouldn't have any long-term with benefits, would make a savings of $263,997 by not giving benefits to district subs and moving them back. It was a benefit, we used our COVID dollars to do that, and we've been able to do that. But I, it's a recommendation that we have to help facilitate that change. We reduced a psychology position, which was a savings of 50 grand. The non-union increases, you can see is $15,931. A secretary, secretary increases, I just made a projection of dollars because we still have to negotiate with the secretary. So I put an estimate of what that potential cost could be by looking at all their salaries of $32,000. We didn't replace a special ed supervisor, which is a savings. She made $61,528 before she left. A social worker, that's open. If we don't receive the grant from the ISD, then that position would be reduced because it was a grant position. So I didn't put the cost in there because we don't have that yet. Early on, teacher was reduced, but that teacher was moved to add another special ed position at Hoover, so it was a wash. Hoover speech increased .5, so that was an increase of $38,000 to there. And then moving to, from a substitute to an assistant for the care room is a savings of $20,000. Then a preschool teacher, we have on hold. So these on-holds are based on numbers. We believe that, looking at our numbers right now, there's at least one reduction in preschool. So it changes our budget $80,000. And an associate teacher resigned, and so that's $35,000. I have a third, fifth grade on hold at Webb Elementary, based on numbers of students coming in. I have a fourth grade on hold at Webb Elementary School. I have a kindergarten on hold at United Oaks. And a first grade, third first grade at United Oaks, a fourth grade at United Oaks, and a fifth grade on hold. So all of those dollars are just estimates based upon waiting to see what our student enrollment. I have to tell you, I'm not sure what those holds will be. We've had a great enrollment the other night. We had 40 new students come. And, and so we're just looking at some numbers now. I didn't get those today because we were still preparing some of this for you. You'll see later on that we are moving some of the dollars of tutoring. Oh, I got it in the wrong thing. Of 142, 324, some of the tutoring. So this will be that we will move some of this year's tutoring at the elementary to the community school grant from Balmer to offset us for a school year to help facilitate, offset costs. Because we didn't use the whole $500,000 last year, so we're offsetting some tutoring in there. Reducing after-school detentions and homework help from the high school and the number of tutors saves another $32,000. If we remove Cognia, which is our recommendation, because we already do that in my KIP, that would be $11,200. And then the next two savings that we have right now is something called the TriShare program. The TriShare program are for our individuals that are in preschool and latch key. It's a three-way share, the school district, the state, and the staff member. What we're recommending is that in order to be in our preschool for free or our latch key for free, that the teachers have to apply to TriShare. And at least for this first year, if they get approved, then we get extra dollars. If they don't get approved, then at least they applied. And then we can talk about next year, perhaps going one step further and saying, if you don't qualify, then you make a certain amount of money, and then you would pay for that. But it's such short notice that we feel like that would be dampening to our teachers to say, you have to qualify or pay us a third of the cost. So that savings is 4.2 million with 823. The estimated reduction right now, I said, is 2.1. And that is, the next step was to say, what are some other things that you'd like us to look at? We have been combing our budget line items. Listen, this isn't like we have a lot of supply dollars for individuals. I started going through and saying, hey, like maybe this building, every, they'll get $3,000 worth of supplies for their office, and elementary's will get $1,000. We can, we can look at those line items very further, which we, we probably will with or without, you know, the support to do that. We'll probably cut that back and then do what we did originally. Dan and I gave so many dollars for each classroom. And then if you needed extra, you came to us, right? It makes people start thinking about what you're ordering a little differently. But that's where we are at this point in time for cost reductions. And then we're open to your suggestions. And then we can bring back to you the cost savings, actual cost savings from that that could be put in place.
I have a couple of questions on this before we move on. So we're cutting our professional development. How much is in that? We're not cutting it out completely, we're just cutting it down? Or we're cutting it?
Dr. Domich, will you speak to that specifically?
Correct. Sure this is on. So essentially, the first two years, we spent significant amount of dollars to train everybody K-8. And then, as you know, we've added ninth, 10th, and now 11th grade. We feel that all of our teachers in K-8 are well-trained, and our instructional coaches certainly can carry that through. We did retain some training for high school because we added 11th grade this year, so we retained a small portion. In addition to that, for the first two years with that grant, we had something called a literacy leadership training, and that was for all of our coaches and administrators. And we have removed that for this year.
Okay, so this reduction in, in PDA is only R?
Correct.
We still have dollars of line items that we will put in place for them to attend professional development. But we obviously will be very cost-efficient, like really looking at those carefully.
And then this is a, I'm not sure, the assistant principal positions? I'm not sure, I think you double, double counted reductions. So I guess, I, because Tammy's retirement's $228. The assistant principal, George, moving in, he's getting paid 207, but it's?
No, his last year's salary was 207. So you remove, you add that position back in, but our savings is 20 grand. So you eliminate him totally.
I see, but wouldn't that count as this?
No.
They took it out when they took out the 228? Isn't that $20?
No, because we eliminated, we eliminated Julie Kaminsky. You have to remember the position up above. And so then you have to add, go down, add, go down. So while you would say George is another $20,000 savings, but he goes back in to 207, you put his position back in. So the left side is, is added cost, and the right side is reduced cost.
I got that. But, okay, we took out Tammy's.
Right, look at Julie Kaminsky's. She's a $7,000 increase, but her salary remains in there. That position.
Or I mean Tammy, and then George.
That's total all-in salary. Yeah, it's a reduction, right.
This is already the savings. You can't take it again. You already took it right here.
This is per savings alone. This is the, the difference. So this is money that's gone. This is money that just won't be taken here because it's the difference.
I, I understand that part. I'm saying this $20 was already taken out of here. You took out the position. This is an additional savings. This is, this is, this is gone. This is not additional savings. It's gone.
Tammy's salary was 228, so you take George's salary, which I believe is 207, all-in, and then that's a savings from down below. I'll have to, I don't have George's salary in here.
George cost less than Tammy.
I get it.
And Beach cost less than George.
Just in the fact that you took Tammy's position off completely, that is not a savings of $20,000. You already took it off and you took her salary off. You took off the $20,000 and you took her salary off. That is, in my, maybe I'm reading it wrong.
Debbie, I would, I would be. I will be happy to put the total salaries next to that in a different way so that you can see it. Okay?
Yes, I see it. I, I can see how you're seeing it. But I do think that maybe if the actual, like if the all-in actuals were listed in the calendar, we sort of make a pop-up more.
It's an all-in actual.
But she's talking about not counting them as a savings, counting, like putting their actual salaries instead of?
I'll show you what that, I'll show you.
On the next version.
On the next version. I'll do that for you tomorrow.
To make them half-flow.
I'll help you see it tomorrow.
To me, that's double-dipping, but, okay. And then the last one, two, three, oh no, I'm skipping. District subs?
Yes.
So we're eliminating all the sub, and having everybody go through edge of staff?
Yes. And they would not get insurance.
Okay, would it still, if, their pay rate wouldn't necessarily change?
No, we would pay them at our daily rate of pay or the long-term sub-rate.
So their pay rate would change?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Hence the savings.
Would they edge of staff prior to COVID?
Yes. And, and do you understand that this savings isn't a reduction in what they will be paid because they wouldn't be here every day? They wouldn't, you know, the downside of that is we may see an increase in what we have to pay teachers because we don't have these set subs every day. But it is a saving. So you may see a savings also in salary. But this is only benefits that you, I have here. So it's 29, 333 per position for benefits. It's a savings times the amount of subs. I can't remember what I put in there.
So that's only, that's only their benefits?
That's only their benefits.
Because you might have to pay, we might have to, because teachers get their pay rate if they sub on their prep.
Yes, they do. So if, the chances is they may go to another district that has long-term subs.
So it might be a wash there, maybe?
No, not a wash, I don't think, because we won't pay, listen, it, you won't be paying for sure every, all those teachers, like, what is it, nine of them?
Yeah, insurance alone is like $200,000.
Yeah, so you wouldn't be paying.
And then your, your retirement.
Right, that's what the 29 is. I took actual subs from last year, long-term subs, and I pulled up their June 30th pay, and I took their actual total benefits and put it over, which is the same for almost all of them except some that are a little differently paid because they did different assignments or what have you. So it just, we go back to the traditional subbing of you get daily rate of pay, and if you're a long-term, you get the long-term rate of pay, which I believe was already, did we do subpay this year?
We didn't change it from last time. It's still at the Gassler's stuff, way from the?
Well, that's their pay, but our, our daily rate of pay in the sub is two-something, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so if you're a long-term, you get 200-something versus getting 180 days at, you know, a full salary.
Okay, and then all of these other ones, preschool, teacher, associate teacher, elementary teacher, fourth grade, kindergarten, first grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, those are all, may or may not happen.
Right, so we, we had an, we had registration on Thursday. This morning, Josh pulled over the number of kids that we have, and that is like 2,900 kids between they're in our system and the 100-plus that are in, in the enrollment school, which means that parents have to finish those items. And so what we would continue to do is, those positions are on hold. We're not letting any positions be hired until we, until we see the numbers in the classroom. And so we'll also be pushing families to Hoover, where the classrooms were lower last year.
And the last, this, on the far right on this, it says 1.34 million. Is that the total of the on-hold thing?
No.
Or are you doing total?
No, the, I think the total of the on-hold things, you had at about 900,000.
Oh, I think this is wrong there.
Yeah. And so what, what is done with this before is we plus and minuses as we go through. So everything that we do, we, as a matter of fact, Monica's already working on that in her budget, is looking at these things. But she did not put the on-hold items. That's what we're working on. And so administration will continue to work on this if they see something like, for example, I got an email, oh, from Stephanie, like, remember Cognia? That's 11,200. That's not very much, but it's 11,200. Okay, yes, we got to put those in. And so we'll continue to add to this. And then when we do a budget update in October, that will, you know, change this significantly as well. And if we see things along the way, then that'll help us. So for example, if, if, I don't know, if Title I is suddenly cut, we add that we're going to need to have another 595,000 added on to reductions, which it's not being cut. Title I nor special editor being cut, they're funded the same.
Okay, I'm almost there. Elimination, detention of homework help from the high school, a number of tutors. Are we eliminating, like homework, I don't know, did junior high have homework centers?
Well, the high school started homework center next year, and we're going to have the tutors available in the media center instead of doing the number of tutors that we did before. They'll be in the media center so they can homework help and tutor.
Oh, okay.
And we did reduce the numbers everywhere on the number of tutors to pull back the cost.
Okay.
And then we moved in the 171,000 into the community school grant from Ballmer, not United Way.
So we're not doing away with it, we're just reducing the number of tutors?
Yes.
Okay. Is that 170 number, the 142 plus the 32, 256? Like that's both put together?
No.
Okay.
It was 171 minus, Stephanie and I did those numbers earlier today.
And just, what is TriShare?
So again, TriShare is a program done, welcome Stephanie, go ahead.
Sure.
I need to breathe.
I'd be happy to let you breathe. So the state of Michigan has a program called TriShare. I believe it started maybe in 2023, 2024, and it is in partnership with the United Way. And what that program is designed to do is really support childcare and support districts. So the reason why it's called TriShare is that if an individual applies for it, and there are some eligibility requirements, but if an individual applies for it and they are awarded or eligible for it, the idea is that the employee would pay a third, the state would pay a third, whatever the tuition is, and then the district would pay a third. That's where the TriShare comes from. So they actually sent some information, information to us about six to eight months ago. We've been looking at it for a while and really felt this was the time to move into that. It's a relatively easy process. If approved to move forward, essentially, our staff members would go on a website, they would have to apply. There is some, again, there's some income eligibility to it, so they do have to go through some of those steps, but based on speaking with the rep, it is a relatively easy process to apply for.
And then do we, do they cut us, like how does that, how do we get money out of that?
They would, the state of Michigan would send it to us now. Whether it comes in a state aid payment or how that comes, we would have to dig into that further. But I would assume it would come in some sort of a state aid payment of some sort.
And then ultimately, we could move to the process in the future of that third is paid by the employee, a third is paid by the school district, and a third is paid by the state, right? Instead of utilizing that. So our first step is to get them into that. And if we continue to see that we're not, you know, you could decide not to provide preschool to our staff anymore or Latchkey, which I wouldn't encourage because lots of people use it, but this will give us additional funding to reimburse this, step one. And then with more time, we can see how that works for us and then have a conversation as we plan for the 26, 27 school year. I'd hate to cause with people with young ones, it's almost August, but like, oh, by the way, we're not going to give you childcare, you have to pay for it. I wouldn't want to do that.
How many staff members utilize the preschool program?
Stephanie has that number. Foria, mine's closed. I closed it earlier.
I, so, I'm going to do, this is a, don't quote me because it's, it's quick to count. So for Latchkey, we have 20, 20 staff members, this is Latchkey, K-5, have 20 staff members across our buildings, not, it's 20 students. Well, I would say this is probably about 12 to 14 staff members because some of them have multiple students. For Webster, it's going to take a little bit more, so we have about, we have 19 students in Latchkey at Webster, and that could be a combination of AM, PM, or both AM and PM. We have 11 staff members that are taking advantage of the two-year-old preschool. And then we have eight staff members taking advantage of the preschool academy.
And was that eight?
Yes, and this is from, those are the numbers from 24, 25.
No, that's perfect. So how much does it cost to send a student to preschool there? I'm just curious.
Uh, so it costs for preschool academy at $625 a month times 10, so $6,250 for preschool.
And that's a two-year-old too?
Yes, the two-year-old in the preschool.
And what about for Latchkey?
Um, at the preschool, AM, Latchkey is $45, sorry. AM and PM is $70 because the ratio-
A day or a week?
A week.
And we chose not to increase that because we still do have a fund balance in our childcare, and we've always been known for having super reasonable childcare amounts, but you might in the future have to look at increasing that cost.
And that, is, is that the same for the K, K-5?
No, K-5 is a little bit different because the ratios, the staffing ratio is not as high. So for AM only, it is $25 a day. This is a day.
A day.
Or day, I mean a week, sorry. It's a week. For PM, we do not have anybody in PM, but I think it's $40.
It is, I pay 40.
Thank you.
Per African, so it's $40.
And so if you are AM and PM, it is $55 a week.
So you have a, if you, you like both?
Correct.
And we've had the same fees for years.
For years, absolutely.
Thank you. It's a different fund, it's not going to help our general fund, so if we can help our families, I think that's another reason to stay in Hesel Park as well.
No, I was just curious.
Yeah, so I certainly will, I, I'm hoping by tomorrow I might have some of the numbers that they showed and have some more estimations about, you know, maybe we, if we have to do a three-year-old classroom or not. We still have another registration next week, and then in August as well, we have two. They've been really well-attended. I encourage you as board members to come up, it's nice to see the parents and, you know, talk with them. But these are the decreases that we have at this point in time, and if there's other items you'd like us to look at, we can bring back that cost. If you are interested in the TriShare, we can have a memo available for you for next week that show, that, that approves TriShare and the steps that we're suggesting tonight, which is to step into it, see how it works for us and how it works for our teachers. And then if we need additional reductions in 26, 27, then we'll have that conversation at that point in time.
I would like that, but I would also just make the recommendation, I know it's, it's a long shot, but TriShare does have a couple of larger industry partners, I think the state of Michigan itself is one of them, where if there were parents in the district that had children enrolled in preschool or K-5, Latchkey, that were employed by a TriShare-approved partner that was not the school district, they would also be eligible to participate in TriShare through their employer. It would then provide that third state benefit.
We'll have that information next Monday.
I need your consent.
We'll, we'll have that information next Monday.
Do we have any services that are coming up to bid that we can reduce?
That's where we talked earlier about looking at SETSEG, looking at Workman's Comp. You can look at the audit to come up to bid. You know, quite frankly, you can bid the cost of attorney fees and they normally will give you those as well. And then really pushing back on making sure that we have three bids for everything and everything's coming through us, so making sure that we're thinking through. So those are the major garbage was another thing that I mentioned when I came back, is we could bid garbage again. We bid garbage when I first started, I don't think we've done it since then. We can look at our energy terms, though I think we're probably better off where we are now. We can have a conversation with them to say, is, you know, look to see if there's a better option. Right now, we purchase our energy in a reduced fee, reduced fee. So all of those are things, but listen, we don't have a ton of fluff in Hesel Park schools, I know. People think we do, but it's not like there's thousands of dollars of supplies and what have you. So we'll, I'm, I'm hoping that next, next month at the committee, they'll, I'll have some examples of some line item reports that different people do in Oakland County with working with Tyrell East, that we could show you to see what budget reports you guys might like differently as well. And you'll be able to see, there's 9,000 line items, you know, if you really want a line item report, and that will come up here in a minute, it's 9,000. It took me almost a whole day on a Friday when I was off to kind of go through line item by line item and really look and think about, like, is there a reduction here for this? And so I think we can work together to come up with some other ideas too, but I think it's trash.
Custodial supplies.
Custodial supplies, yes, which, and we've talked about, which I talked about before is, instead of allowing the buildings to do those Amazon, I'm going to do a 3M paper, I'm going to do a stapler, I'm going to do this, but doing a big purchase and then getting a better cost for them, having a room where we have those things instead of people being able to do the Amazon.
Are we still utilizing the gentleman that comes in and was training to the custodial staff?
No, that's gone.
That's gone?
That's gone. We didn't pay for it after Mr. Zernus left us in the fall that was eliminated out. And actually, our supply people will train. I met with one of our supply guys that we've had for a long time, and he's like, listen, I'll train you on any things that you need. So I would say whoever we're going to buy, you know, if we can bid out those items, they will, and we could also look at the consortiums that are up there as well instead of using some of the people we have to cut down on supplies. For the paper, paper-
I think it also would be very helpful if all our three-year plans are expired.
Yes.
We got those back up and running, so we know what we need, what we're planning on funding on equipment or maintenance or computer-wise.
We will have those for you in October or November for going forward, having them completed now. They should have been completed back in January. And with the things that we're doing to bring up schools and also to look at this budget, I can't tell you that that's something that we could have ready for you right away because they really need to be reviewed as a whole. So we'd prefer to ask for that to be able to be to you in October, November timeframe.
So you mentioned that the preschool is a different fund, so it won't have this-
No, Latchkey. Latchkey, I'm sorry. Yeah, no, no, right, childcare is a different fund.
So I would like to know how much the two-year-old program is, because I don't think that's mandated.
None of it's mandated, two or three. It's encouraged, but it's not mandated.
Correct. So, so I'd like to just look at the cost of that. But I still would like to see the one bus that, or the one, I'm not saying one bus, one school that we do busing, if that accomplished what we wanted to, we did to help offset absenteeism and currency. And did it do that? How much does that cost? Maybe that's something that we can look at. Because I believe if we do one, we're supposed to do them all? I could be wrong on that one.
We are not. You do not have to. But we should.
Right, so we should do none or all?
Well, yes, I, that is for the presentation, as I mentioned in my email to you, that is for the presentation on Monday, which is an attendance presentation to talk about our attendance rates, which includes the look at that. And so Dr. Domich and Mrs. Gressley have that presentation for you next Monday.
Perfect.
Yeah, we will also go through tomorrow in administrative council and think through all the things that could be potentially bid, Heidi, and put those on the list for tomorrow night's meeting.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Any more questions? It's a great report, shows a lot of hard work put into that, for sure.
And that goes to the entire team. Entire team has been working and discussing that.
It shows. Thank you. Sinking fund.
So in front of you is this piece of paper right here that I asked Monica to have for us. It's not pretty, but it's serving our purpose. And she said, do I need to type it up? And I said, no, because we really, listen, we are all steam ahead on everything that we're doing. And so I'm on a point to talk a little bit about why we did what we did here.
Okay, there's, there are a couple of things you're seeing here. At the top is a chart, and that was for us to see the timing of when our sinking fund money generally comes in. Not knowing where we were going to land at the end of this year, we wanted to see potentially, you know, and it should more come in over the summer because we say that we want a full tax collection in the summer, we don't put any of that off till the winter. So looking at fiscal year '24, the first column that says, has seven on the top, that's for July. So you see in '24, we received $584,000. I have to think a lot of that was from the prior year because I don't think that many people are paying their taxes that early. But what I would expect to see is a larger amount coming in in August and September, and that's what we did consistently see the last two years. Then below that, in the scribbles, it says current balance, 657, 781. That is what we're showing now. I went back actually three years to reconcile the cash for the sinking fund, and that's where we are, hopefully we should expect anything else to come in. So at the end of June, food service-
The remodel piece right there.
Yeah, yeah, that, it's, the food service remodel, the food service fund did not have enough money to pay for their whole portion of the cafeteria remodel, so 250,000 of that will need to come out of the sinking fund. So that would leave us with a projected ending balance for this year '25 and the sinking fund of just about $408,000.
Is, is the $250 in that was the interest-free loan they gave us?
No, that's, of the cafeteria remodel, it was, had it set up to pay $750,000 of that cost out of the cafeteria fund. They only came into this year with, they, around 700,000, so they couldn't afford the whole 750,000. So sinking fund will have to cover 250 of that.
And it was always planned to take money. Jason had already said, you know, it's sinking fund and also cafeteria fund, so it's really just balancing those ones out.
Is that paid off now? Cafeteria fund?
The cafeteria, project. The project.
The project is, yeah.
It's just us moving.
So there's no more invoices for the cafeteria remodel?
No.
And there's no more money in the cafeteria fund? So big freezer was at the high school, there's nothing there to cover that, that now comes out of the Gemma Fund.
This will leave a small amount in the cafeteria fund for that reason, and we have to, I don't know that they, the state mandates a certain percentage, but we should leave something in there, so if they do need new equipment, there'll be a little bit to cover that.
Well, you say, here you have a break even. Break even's like a zero. So you're saying there is like a little bit of fund balance in there?
Yes, so break even as far as their activities for this year, if we restore their $250,000 of that expense, so that doesn't factor in all their fund balance that they brought forward.
In a previous life, when you transferred from one area to another, one fund to another in a previous life, you had to have board approval. Is that true here in the state of Michigan?
Uh, no, I don't believe it is.
Okay. I just, it sits somewhere in the back of my mind that I had to do transfers before and I had to have board approval, so it's probably not true.
So this grand total of 2,536,811, that's a combination of what we received for those two years?
Yes. So the plan moving forward with the sinking fund is to take the projected amounts that we'll get for 2026, which is this school year, and that, and have a spreadsheet that get for 2026, which is this school year, and that, and have a spreadsheet that we'll have in place for community of the whole to say, here are the things that we're, that are approved to take out of it, like concrete, bus, that we've agreed, and here's the dollars we have left. So that as we plan to look at next summer and even the spring, that we can talk as a group about what we will be taking out of that in a very concise way. A long time ago, we said our process would be in October, we would approve the activities that would be for the summer so that we could go to bid no later than December and January. And we were always chasing our tail. This really puts us in a position of being able to have that conversation by looking at those long-range plans that we have out in October to say, hey, here's the things that, the building changes that we'd like to be in, and it very well could be some roofing project, the way it was leaking it at the junior high. We'll have to go out and get some bids for that to fix it.
Okay. So my next question is, the current balance of 657, does that include the $88,000 for July, the $497 for August, the $520 for September?
Yes, that was last July and last August.
Well, it says 2025. We're in 2025 now, right?
No, we're not. We're in 2026.
It's our '24, '25 school year. So that was our fiscal year.
In business funding, in school district funding, you use the new January. So this is school year 2026, according to the finance world in schools.
Okay. So this '25, the 2024 date is '23, '24 school year?
Right.
And the 2025 date is the '24, '25?
Yes, right.
Okay, so that's why it's all for that?
Right.
Got it.
But the balance is $407,000 as of right now. I'm confused.
That's our estimate. It's our estimate. So the current balance is 657, but we're gonna, we're gonna give $250,000 back to the cafeteria fund, and then our estimated amount, you know, pending the audit.
And that gives them that.
407. Yeah, that gives them a leeway. 407. I mean, either way, listen, you're gonna pay, we're gonna pay it either way. If they need a new oven, whether it comes out of the cafeteria fund or whether it comes out of the sinking fund, we're gonna get a new oven.
It makes sense.
And then that food service and the special ed, we had given you a dollar that they would be like $75,000 for the food service and then $2 million for the special ed fund. That is not correct. They are fluff. They have, zero for the special ed.
Okay. So I have one more question. Nope. Isn't the sinking fund up for, on the ballot soon?
No, I don't believe it's till 2028 or 2029.
You know.
Yeah, we reviewed all of this with Baker Tilly, and at another time when we don't have a two-hour length of items, we'll talk about what Baker Tilly had to say about the property taxes and such, which is kind of what I alluded to earlier. Like, we would go perhaps if the board approved in 2027 for a bond, and then in 2029, you'd have to go back out for the sinking fund to have it extended.
One last question, if I may. Will we be anticipating any purchases of technology equipment, like Chromebooks and iPads for those students?
As part of the three-year plan.
We will bring that, but unfortunately, they didn't, they weren't done. So unfortunately, we will have those. So I don't believe we have any purchases right now, Brad, that you've brought to me.
Is ours?
No, he hasn't brought anything to me yet.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there stuff coming end of service this year?
Joe, he'll talk it with me when we kind of look at what these pieces are. That hasn't been brought to me. So normally, we're ordering those in April and May.
I just was anticipating a hit and not to be surprised, that's all.
We'll bring that back to you some conversations as well.
Yes, thank you.
Yep, you bet. I hope that's helpful.
Very helpful. Helps me understand.
We really are, guys, they are working around the clock. I'm just really happy. But that's when I kind of draw the line to say, no, we can't do that.
And I don't mind the not hiring right in this time.
All right, number nine, Michigan Cyber Academy contract extension.
So Michigan Cyber Academy has requested an extension, and Jimmy did the contract for us. Really, it just extends the contract out for us for additional years, out until 30, which is what they requested. So Michigan, this is a vendor school, which what that means is that it is a school that we run. Dr. Domage has that in her department and Invest, and we get a percentage of the state aid for that. So they get paid 78, and we get the remaining, remainder, about 22%.
Questions?
Is this part of our student count?
This is part of our student count, MCA, versus MVCA, which is the virtual charter school. This is, we run this school, and we have an agency that helps facilitate that. Not to be confused with Viking Virtual, which is inside our high school, and also a separate entity per the EEM.
Okay, number 10, Frontline.
So this is, we use Frontline for many things, and really trying to streamline and take some of the work off. But this is for the evaluation system that we were required to have. So this pays, all of our evaluations are in there. They, our teachers' evaluations are in here. We can expand that further, but right now, it's teachers and admin evaluations that we have inside of Frontline.
Anybody have questions? Comments?
Is this a contract, or is it, is this something that can be negotiated?
Well, we cannot negotiate with Frontline. But what we do for Frontline, which works, is there are absent, there are, through the county, there's a negotiated contract for applications. We also do our professional development. We reduced that from KALPA with a lower cost coming to Frontline. So it all kind of merges together, and then people can apply through their documents through here as well. So it's, we've kind of got it flowing in. It might be something in a couple of years that you want to go back and look and say, is there a different system that's been developed? But right now, we've worked really hard the last couple of years to get that in line. And so teachers put in their request to go to a conference, and it moves through the system to us. And then it also now, Stephanie and Christie got it so that it also puts in their day off when we approve it. So it's not, some people don't have to manually go into things. So it's just making things easier.
So is this where they put in their professional development, too?
Yep, that's what I was just saying. I'm sorry, I wasn't clear.
Yeah, that's okay.
Their mentoring as well, and then also our time card.
Perfect.
That's a good organizational tool. Keep everybody.
Yeah, we're trying. And you want to continue to look to streamline your work. And especially in central office, we're asking people to do more with less. So you gotta, gotta do that.
Okay, number 11, ISD visit update.
Are we there? I thought it was at DFC grant. I'm sorry. So I, we did have a visit from Terry Lees. Terry Lees is the Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations at Oakland School. She was at Wald Lake for 22 years, 12 of which she did Crystal's job, and the rest, she did Monica's job. And she sits on the board for Michigan Association of Business Officials. As a matter of fact, she's taken off tomorrow to head to their conference to oversee on their governing board. She's very well-known. Like I said, I shared with Bev that when we were talking with Huntington, they were like, oh, that's fantastic that you're working with Terry. So Terry came in, and I have an executive summary that I will share with Bev tomorrow, and then talk about how to move forward, where she talked about our areas of strength. And then she reviewed all of our documents, reviewed our audit, reviewed our processes, interviewed staff. And she has some recommendations for us to go forward with. I just got them today. And then she gave us some definitions of position budgeting, as well as zero-based budgeting, with her suggestion that we move to position budgeting, then look at zero-based budgeting moving forward. And as she said, she knows that, you know, it's, we have a small budget, so you have to kind of look outside some of those traditional things. She also, Wald Lake went through nine years of salary reductions and costs with her first year, and Ken Gutman's year being $24 million of reductions that they had to do. And so she gave me some examples of some forms that she kept historically about some of the changes that have been done. And so she has suggestions, like I said, I want to share them with Bev tomorrow if we're meeting at 4 o'clock. If not, I'll do it next, the two weeks, because I'm gonna be gone next week. But to kind of talk that through with her and with the next steps and bring some suggestions back to all of you. But it was very well done and made some good points.
Anybody have questions? No questions, comments? Number 12, Coalition Report.
Stephanie, you want to talk through these real quick? Or just the DFC grant and Coalition grant?
No, I think some of these financial documents might be better if it's okay with Crystal.
This is just the Co- oh. I could share those documents now. Let's do that. Do you, I'll, I'll take that one back. I'm sorry. So I gave you, I didn't, Crystal did this, two documents. One document on the top says Oakland County, which is the Oakland County grant, and the other document says DFC. Looks like this. So the question that was, happened that trustee LaFrambois shared with me is that she had been meeting with Monica and Crystal when I was not here, and there was some conversation about looking at these grants because they have flown through, flowed through us for a very long period of time. So let's first look at the one that says Oakland County. What is happening is really some positioning budgeting starting to occur here. So next year, it'll be even better for you. So we receive about $35,000 each year from the county. Sometimes there's a little bit more because they have some special grants that are in here. So you can see up above that we received $35,000 in our, well, that was our budget, but we actually received a little bit more than that. So in the '23, '24 school year, we received $12,636 in this school year. So let me play that again. You see the $35,000, we actually received 51. The difference between 35 and 51 is the $23, $24 that weren't gotten, that we were able to pull over after Monica and Crystal were working on this. The cost, you can see down below, which equate to 38,314. And there's gonna be some of that that is moved over to the DFC grant because it's a little excess, correct?
Right. Just to make one little small correction if I could.
Yes.
So the 51,194 is the actual, so we actually received 38,000. So we've actually received the full amount that the grant was. So which is why the expenses are 38,314. Part of those expenses, we receive on-kind, too, but that's not something that we normally would track because it's not really a piece that is guaranteed.
Are you talking about the in-kind?
Yes.
So in-kind is our time that we give to the coalition. Right, yeah. So it's not, yes, in there.
So that's where it balances for the alliance, and then for the DFC, well, do you want me to stick it over?
Uh, no.
Okay. So for the DFC grant, you'll see that we initially requested down to 68,201. We've just additionally requested $54,242.79 in addition to $35,448.71. So in all, once this is all posted, we would have received $157,893.38. And a portion of that 35,448 is from the '23, '24 school year that we were able to submit, that was, it wasn't drawn down the year before, so we were able to get it this year. So in all, we'll have going into the '25, '26 school year. Because as you can see, down at the bottom of the '24, '25, that we've only expended $122,000 approximately. So with what's left over from there, in addition to the rollover or the carryover from '23, '24, we'll have about $92,000 in addition to the 125 that we'll get for the '25, '26.
So I tried to make it as simple.
Okay, so 92,000 plus 125 for the '25, '26 school year?
Yep. So that 92,000 is the carryover.
So the purpose of this is to share with you that we, well, first of all, that $35,000 will be extra dollars to our bottom line for the '24, '25 school year. We received $95,000 from City of Detroit, right? And then we also get 150 from Treasury. So you can see that we're already starting to share with you how we are going back to what we did. But this is the report to share based upon trustee LaFrambois says, this is an organization that functions with its own board, and, but the grant was written by our staff. Stephanie sits on that board. I do, too. I haven't been able to be there for a very long period of time. But to show you that this is all trued up, there is no cost to Hazel Park Schools.
Okay, so I unfortunately did not bring the other papers that I got before. And that showed that the '23, '24 school year, we were short like $40,000.
35,448.71.
So that is what? That's because we were short that year?
Mm-hmm.
So that's kind of a repayment to us?
Yes.
Okay. And so then for this year, so you have Oakland County here, DFC, both of these funds?
Yes.
Yes.
Together, they fund the community foundation.
Originally, it was just way back down to Jared, it was just the original Oakland County. And then we wrote and didn't get the grant, and then we wrote and didn't get the grant. And third time's a charm, and we got the grant for $125,000 for five years. And then it's renewable again for five more years.
And we have to write it again?
Oh, yes.
Right. So I'm saying, is there a renewal that?
Is that through Oakland Schools or is that through DFC?
No, that's the DFC grant. And that's not really Oakland Schools, it's Oakland County. So that comes from Oakland County, not Oakland Schools.
So $125,000 for five years, and this will be year two?
Three.
'25, '26 is year three?
Yes.
'20, '26 is year three.
Correct.
That's now.
Current year's the third year.
We've started into the third year.
Because through year 21, it's October 1st.
October 1st, it's not, October 1st. They have a different, the county has a different calendar year.
So we're starting this third year with the 125 we're getting plus the 92. So do we just hold that money for them?
No, you have to draw it down, both places. You have to give them receipts and show this. And then we're not really starting with it. We're the holder for the coalition, which has their own board in person. And so, yes, we wrote the grant, yes, we're involved in it, but it really, it offers a lot of things inside our school. So remember, she's inside our, she gave you this wonderful presentation last week.
Just, so how much of their money do we have like this second? 92,000 because we didn't get the 125 yet? Is that something?
Of their money from the DFC is, because I requested the two payments. Once it posts to the bank pending, is $157,000, the $893.38. Out of the $250,000 that from year one and year two, if you look at, so year one and year two, which is '23, '24, '24, '25, that's $250,000 that if we would have expended, we would have had it by now.
You have to spend it to get it?
Correct.
We didn't spend it, but we didn't spend it.
We have a carryover.
So we didn't get it. But the previous business department did not put in for the DFC grant. But can I tell you, it was very difficult. I was spending months before I left trying to get in, and it took you until March to get in. Now we're in. So, which is, it's really difficult. But it's now flowing.
So the carryover is just a budget? I think I know where you're getting at. The carryover is, essentially, that's the money that is left over, that we're carrying over into the new year. So when we get ready to budget, we'll take that into consideration? Is that what you were?
No. We have money left in the grant, but we're not carrying any money over Hazel Park.
Right.
That we're, we're reimbursing ourselves the $35,000 and the $12,000 from '23, '24. But it's not like we have extra, the coalition has a budget sheet, and they now have the 125 for this year that they can expend, plus whatever's from the grant. And so they'll prepare a budget and approve a budget, and that, at least we used to, prepare a budget and approve a budget. And then that will help them develop the line items, and we're fiduciary kind of watching to make sure they spend within those budgets.
So they didn't technically spend any of that? They didn't actually get, let me rephrase, they didn't actually get any of that? Any of the 92,000 that's the carryover, there's, we don't actually have, are not holding the money?
Correct.
But it's in their budget to spend?
And then every time they spend dollars, they'll have 125 every time they spend dollars, then we do an expenditure report to the county for the first amount, and then to the federal government for the 120,000. It's the same way thing that we do for dollars in the Title I grant or for any grant that we do. You would spend it, and then you send an expenditure report, which is why some of our expenditure reports were not completed. We now do them on a monthly basis in these areas to make sure that we're.
That, I just wanted to see that, that we're getting reimbursed.
I thought that answers your question. I thought that answers your question.
Yeah.
And we can periodically, quarterly, give you that.
That's what I want, periodically, quarterly.
If that's what the board wants, we can share that on a quarterly basis.
Sure.
So, is, do we still receive money from Oakland County, or is it just from the DFC now?
Both.
Both. So, from Oakland County, we always get like 35,000?
Depends on the year. Go ahead, Stephanie.
It's usually 38,000 every year.
38?
Yes. But, the, they also rely on some of the same federal grants that we get, and there was a conversation about some of those funds perhaps being impacted by this change. So, currently, we know that we're getting 38,000.
I believe that today, in my conversation federally, that these dollars are not impacted at this time. I was on with Senator Schlockton today and 500 of my friends.
Okay, all set? Everybody? So, does this basically just pay for salaries then?
Basically, and since there's a little extra money that wasn't done, they can, they get supplies, like they bought those drug bags the first year, and some of that came out of the Oakland County items, and some food for activities for the kids, and we paid for movies at one point in time with that, right? And, so, yes. Yeah. What was that?
That's sports, drug balls?
Yeah, the sports, drug balls and things. Really, items to help communicate how to live a drug-free life and existence. And then, we have some other partners through CARE that we wrote a grant a few years ago that gave, CARE came in and do classes required with our kids at different grade levels for drug-free and, you know, alcohol-free awareness.
Madam President, could we take a 10-minute break, please?
Yes. Yes, everybody all right with that?
Do we have to make a motion, take a 10-minute break?
No.
I'll second it.
Smooth.
Page a blank.
Eliminate the constant request for items from us because that causes them to pull off what they're trying to do to get to board things. I couldn't do the board packet when I got home for vacation last night because I needed to answer all those questions. And it, quite frankly, some of those questions and things that you're asking us is really getting into the weeds. So at some point, we need to have some meetings where you start talking about what's the law and what's not the law and how much you want. But with that being said, I'd like to, if we have requests of items to give, that we go back to that philosophy of we bring it to the board for discussion because we are having a lot of one-offs starting to occur. And it stops us from trying to get done. And quite frankly, the summer's not long enough. So the question was a line item budget. Do we want a line item budget? That line item budget would be 9,000 items. That's how many lines of the budget right now that we have. I can tell you that when we talked to Teri, one of the conversations that she had was that usually when they did a budget amendment, that they gave, she gave their board a line item budget at that point in time. So if that is what you wish, I'm going to tell you, it took me all day to go in and do some comparisons. We can do that if that's what the board wishes, but I would say perhaps we can say, what are the timeframes that you would like that line item budget? And that would also then show the updates of where they're at. So I bring that out for conversation as well as, I think we've gotten to the quarterly reports that you like to see about the Coalition. If that's what the board wants to do. But I don't want us to do a lot of this work if that is not meaningful for the entire board because it stops us in our tracks. But once we get something that everybody seems to be happy with, then that would work. But I would ask that we try to bring that back to this table because I keep stopping and having to do over here and asking them to run extra things and stop what we're trying to do.
Well, didn't you say that she was going to show us some samples?
She can show us some samples of some different reports and that we'll also pull out and then, like she said, I asked her, Teri Lee's.
Okay.
And I said, hey, Teri, did you, did you ever give your board a line item budget? And she said, yes, when I did budget updates, it included a line item budget. Megan's shaking her head, yes, that she's received that as well. So I'd like to kind of say, here's some, what we all agree that's going to work, that you're going to do. But if you're not looking at the line item budget, then please don't make us do it for you every time because it's a lot, right?
So are you talking like every quarter that we get a line item budget?
No, every quarter for the Coalition update for anything that we're doing.
No, no.
And then every time we do our budget update. So I would say that in August, even though that's not a budget amendment, we would give you your first one because we're doing some changes in the line items and you could kind of see the position budgeting and how we're moving towards that direction, number one. And then we give it to you in October. January, I think, is the best budget, and then in March, and then in June.
So it's roughly quarterly.
So it's roughly quarterly, yes. It's roughly quarterly, yes.
But it would match up to when we receive budget amendments.
Yes, so when you receive budget amendments, we get the line items in there.
So is the budget that we got in June that's posted online, that's our base budget, right?
Well, that's just, I want to say it carefully to the audience, that that's just a rollover. The real budget that will probably be our best budget is October, but we will give you some, a update in August.
But that's our base budget?
Yes, that's a base budget year usually is July.
So why do we need another update in August if we're going to have one in October?
We agreed that every other month, we would give you just kind of a budget update about where we are, but then a true budget amendment would occur with additional items they have to do, you know, would occur on your timeframes that you would do it. If you want to wait till October, that's great, but then, you know, you might see the improvement in the works that we're doing given this year if we do it every other month. So it would be, right, it would be kind of just a spreadsheet update of our line items that we see. And hopefully after this year, it would be a report we can run out of B+ as we're learning some expansion of that. And then August or October would be a true budget amendment.
So I've never seen the line item budget for schools, which is broadcastable one because you said there are ways to categorize it, although since I've never seen it, I wouldn't know how to categorize it. So for me to ask, I have to see it somewhere else. That's all. So if it's August, we're getting one, then August will be.
If you're comfortable with doing it in that, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to listen to what you request. I'm trying to ask questions of other people and trying to keep extra work off of the business department that's already running.
So the report that I sent yesterday via text message?
That was just mis-titled on the top. It is, that's 631, that is a handmade report that Crystal handmakes to pull things in. And she just didn't change the top from last month. It doesn't match last month, so if you go back and look at it.
Okay.
It just, we just haven't gotten to that point yet to say, sorry, next week, next month. We'll correct it to the six, but I didn't want them to run that again today.
So why is it a report that you automatically fill in? I mean, all that data looks like it's, can be generated.
Well, that, when we had a meeting with Teri, that's the day that I actually learned that when we upload the amendments, there's a different way to do it to be able to pull that information instead of me using my pretty fingers to put it in.
So in the history of the last night, we need to.
Yes. We're really excited about some of the things that she shared with us and that she can share as she continues to mentor with them on different reports to run in B+ and how we expand to B+. Which we need it all on. So agreed that we will give quarterly updates, including the Coalition, at those time periods. Okay, so it was this time last year that we were able to talk about the concessions profit. So last year, the concessions profit was about $8,800 and we split it down below. And so I just kind of tweaked this to see what your thoughts were. The revenue was $58,000, the expenses was 38, with a profit of $9,500. The previous year, we had $8,800 being earned. Oh, I put that in. Good job. And then I kept the allocation at 150 for those that do not use food service, which is banned cross-country bowling, tennis, and cheerleading. So they got the 150 like you did last year. And that leaves a remaining of $8,783. We would not give two junior Vikings teams as only football had concessions, wrestling did not have any concessions. And so given the fact that they ran through us at that point in time, that we would give them the 675 to the city. And if you wish, and then the rest would be added into their activity funds as it was last year.
Just really tricky. So wouldn't the wrestling get 150? Junior Vikings wrestling?
Uh, junior, no, junior Vikings, no, because they weren't really, they didn't have any activities or sports. They were, they're an outside, and so we wouldn't, we gave, we would give 675 to their teams equally to all the other sports we had. That was not my recommendation because wrestling didn't have any tournaments last year.
So they didn't have any tournaments that you, Chris, you have.
Right.
But that's a.
So we wouldn't give double.
So they didn't have any tournaments at all?
Right. Right.
Okay.
Monday, yes. Is there something else you'd like to see differently? This is just an update to Olsha. We met, Dr. Dolmetsch, myself and Heather met today with Olsha. And they, last year, they added a room and it was given to them pro bono. This year, they're removing the room. And so they have, this is the last of the five-year grant, they have $25,000 set aside for this, and so we agreed to leave it there. They also have amount that they pay for custodial, and we left that level because their funding is level as well. And then just reminded them that if items go into the toilets and we have to bring extra people in, that they have to pay for that. And I understand that we've added a doors to some of the bathrooms that weren't there before that hopefully will eliminate that. It was a really good meeting, but they have to write out for their grant again at the end of the school year, so we don't know what 2026, 2027 brings for them.
How much do we charge them for custodial?
It is in there, it's $9,000, $9,4723 for.
So do they, how do they pay that if they pay their rent on a quarter of the basis? Does that also pay them according to the basis?
I don't, yeah, okay, I was going to say, I don't remember.
And is for five rooms or is it for four classrooms and one office space?
It's for five classrooms and one office space. One of those rooms are a, like a teacher's lounge thing. So up above on, in one, consists of five classrooms. Oh, it says three there, I'll correct that. It says consists of three, five classrooms and one office with early Chireda Webster under one. I'll fix that. Thank you for pointing that out.
Okay, can you do that? 17 months of financial support. Questions, do you have any questions on that?
I answered some for you last night. The other piece is, is that was Mr. Miller's last time being paid.
Yeah. No, I asked.
Thank you for doing that.
I do, I had some questions, but they're okay. But I was looking at one of your reports. This one?
Yep.
You have the amount of the P card as 53, but I thought the P card was 36. So I was confused on what, and then there was another similar sheet, but I don't know what I did with that.
I can double check, but I believe that was probably wrong. My computer dies, can't even get in it right now.
We'll share that with you tomorrow if that works.
Yeah, that's fine. We're just, if it needs to be updated, update it for the next meeting. I'm not quite sure which one's WS. I did see it, I didn't pay that much attention to it. I know she has that question. I guess my question was a lot of petty cash for Jordan. Why, if we have P cards, why is there petty cash?
Well, we don't, first of all, we don't want kids paying with P cards, but they go out in the community. So Dr. Pozian, would you like to answer that?
Sure, yeah. Petty cash is used for things such as, there's supplies for cooking, supplies for different micro businesses that they might go out into the community and shop for with their job coaches.
Okay.
And their job coaches don't have those P cards.
Makes sense.
Yep.
And what is this security, vigilante security?
Uh, that's alarm systems.
Alarm?
Mm-hmm.
Do we pay when they go off or is it just a fee?
It's a monthly fee. But yes, if they continue to go off, we would pay for that too.
It's for everything.
Knock on wood, it's been kind of quiet.
And I'm assuming the Open University is tuition reimbursement?
Yes.
Yes.
Why is it Open University and not Open Community College?
Because it's teacher programs.
Oh, teacher programs. Is that, is that funded through a grant?
Yes.
Grow Your Own.
The Grow Your Own Grant. We were one of the few school districts that received that.
The translator services, what exactly is that?
If you remember that, those services were approved by you. There was a lot of back and forth while I was gone. That is a service to our families that we get to help translate for our EL families.
Heidi, can you refresh my memory?
It was called the language line pilot.
But didn't we only purchase a flat amount?
It's based on how many times we use it, I believe.
We piloted it for a period of time. I'd have to go back because it was when I was gone, I just remember listening to it.
So we approved it not to exceed enough, but it's still a per-use fee. So what we approved was just the, to not to exceed, we didn't approve the article. Okay. I was just on here a couple times tonight. Okay, I'll go back and look.
And I just had one question. The reconditioning of the helmets, I know we talked about it before, I just want to confirm that these are just ours and not ours.
They're just ours. Jimmy worked to make sure that the bill went to the city directly.
I'm looking at Jimmy. Thank you.
Are you all set, Heidi?
Yeah, let me just look at her real quick. Under Brad, he had a T-Mobile for 18, 188979. Just kind of curious what that was.
Brad, is that internet? Thank you for the community that was paying for what lines?
Maintenance.
The maintenance.
What is Grizzly and just, and just, I said on a couple people.
Oh, the Grizzly, is that what it said?
Yeah.
Sorry, like one is underneath Julie.
Yeah, yeah.
That has to do with career readiness. I'm not sure, I can get the specifics on it, but it is grant funded.
We'll bring that back to you tomorrow. Dr. Dolmetsch will.
I was just wondering, it was on multiple people, that's the only reason why I asked.
Yeah, I think one of them had toys.
Maybe that's all I have. Okay, we're on to other community coalition.
Communities, school grant. It is the community school grant, which is the United Way grant. It just shows the approval for the step-down for this year. We are working and meeting with United Way with some extension of our grant as it continues to step down. And I will be writing some requests to Ballmer when we get past some of these meetings.
So did you just kind of combine that because you said United Way?
It is the United Way. It is D1. You know what, I think you have the old agenda. Coalition, I took off and put up there, I apologize. I was, I thought, it's the United Way, so yes, I took care of the United Way. It was duplicated and we checked that out, I apologize for that.
Okay, number two, eighth grade trip to Washington DC.
Yep, so we, Dr. Kaminski, put in the report for you to approve a May trip, and we wanted to make sure that we got that on the books early so that our kids can start fundraising as soon as possible. So it would come next Monday.
And the kids have to pay the whole amount?
Yes. But there'll be fundraising opportunities. And really, we should probably do this in the spring next time so they have all summer to start some fundraising because it's difficult.
So it says in May, but there's not an exact date yet, I.
Not yet. They don't have it yet.
It would be in there, okay.
To be honest with you, we pushed Julie to do this memo very quickly so that we could get it approved and out to you guys so that they could start talking with the kids.
So does, is there a committee that does the fundraising? How does that work?
Last year, or two years ago, Carla Beach developed some things, and so I think they would work with their PTA at the junior high, and they would work with parents to, you know, talk about, and then they'll have to submit the request for fundraisers in with all the other fundraisers that are going out in the district.
The past few years, it's been the principal and assistant principal handling that.
Okay, number three, after-school tutoring.
I'm going to have Dr. Dolmetsch take all of this on.
So I am coming to discuss our regular proposal really that we bring to you every year to support our students with after-school tutoring. We did pull off the detention homework help, I think we addressed that earlier. We also really tried to think about how we could bring this to you and still be financially wise about what we were bringing. So we did remove those two pieces, the detention from the high school and homework help. So we combined what's going on with the tutoring. We also reduced the number of teachers and the number of days per week. For example, in the past, at elementary, we had them there four days a week. We've reduced it down to three. That's really probably a more realistic number of days that we actually do implement anyways. But in the past, the amount that we brought to you was significantly higher due to all those extra programming pieces. You can also see that the majority of that $219,240 is covered by the Ballmer Community Schools Expansion Grant. And so then we would have a small portion for our high school in the amount of about $28,350 that would come out of the general fund. And many items at advantage are supported by 31A. So our goal is to cover the portion at advantage in the amount of $19,845 with the 31A funds. So essentially, the vast majority of that $219,000 would be covered through that Community School Expansion Grant Fund.
For this year.
For this year.
We don't know if we can do it later on.
Yeah, thank you. Nice, nice money. Student of the Month.
So this was brought on for your request.
Right. So we recognize Student of the Month, and it's a feeling that the board, it's a board recognition that we should all be handshaking and Promise Zone should hand out shirts with their supervisor. So we would like to be joined as a team, that it's a recognition by the school board, so we're all handshaking, we're all together.
All right, so you're saying you don't want me to hand out the shirts?
Right.
Okay, well, the issue with that unfortunately is I can't always get someone from Lansing, our executive director or chief innovation officer at the moment, to come down here. So this is why we do it that way sometimes, Fernando can come here. But I do all the T-shirts, I plan it all, I get them all, like I feel like that's a big thing of what I've done. I get where you're coming from, but I still handshake and I still do it as part of both. So I don't understand quite why you want to take me away from that.
I guess like when, when you're at the board, and you're in this room, you're a board member, yes, you do Promise Zone, but when you're here, you're a board member. When you're at the Promise Zone, you're a Promise Zone member. Like when you're at the dinner, you're doing stuff for them. You're not necessarily sitting with the board or being acknowledged as a board member. So to be unified as one, I think Beth is trying to say that you should be up with the board and it shouldn't be all about me. That's what you're trying to say.
This is a hard discussion because it isn't.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Yeah, I like the background that you just gave and your involvement and how you do all of that because I don't think we're aware of that. So it has nothing to do with you as a person. It has to do that we're bored, it's a board recognition. And it's wonderful, Promise Zone comes and they give the shirts, but the feeling is it's a board recognition and it looks more like a Promise Zone recognition. So I just brought it up for discussion to see what people.
So would you like the Promise Zone to not do the shirts anymore? Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm just saying that we're giving them the platform to do it to, which is a wonderful program, and we're providing the venue and the students, and it's a great thing. So I'm not saying that they shouldn't do it, I'm just saying that it should be, this isn't just my, this wasn't just me. It is no, you know what?
I have to say, if you want it from the board, then the Promise Zone shouldn't do it.
So maybe Dr. Crippie can hand it out and.
Dr. Wilk.
Sorry. Versus.
But as a Promise Zone board member, and Jamie's a Promise Zone board member as well, I think we continue to try to elevate, Promise Zone is to bring more people into our school district. And so it's a partnership between the school and the Promise Zone. I think it was very nice for them to step in. I don't know what used to happen when the other group bought shirts for us. Why can't I think about that tonight? I am tired.
The other group was called the Hazel Park Lions Club.
Yes, the Lions Club, I'm a member of. They, I don't know if they came during those times or not to hand out shirts.
Typically, no. It was the assistant superintendent, superintendent, and when we videotaped it, it was on stage in the studio. And the community school rep director would hand out the shirts and, but not shake hands, the other two would. I, if I could offer a compromise, I'm visually seeing why can't Monica stand up here with us and when the student comes through, the, you know, when she hands them the shirt, instead of being separate, would that help bring us together more? Just a thought.
So how Monica view, like the end of the line, the T-shirt stacked up there and handed to as.
Yes.
Or the front of the line.
Or the front, yeah, or the front of the line, either way.
Here's the thing, it's not a picture of the whole board. If unit members came, I'm assuming to Beth, somebody came to Beth and said, listen, why is it always about Monica? It's a whole board.
I was asked. Well, I was asked that.
Because the T-shirts are from the Promise Zone. I get where she's coming from, that it's supposed to be a board thing, but it's never been, it was never discussed to do it that way. The Promise Zone was asked to do this because there was no T-shirts, no recognition given out, so we did that. If you do not want the Promise Zone to do that, we don't have to do that, and we can talk about them coming from the board.
And then the board would need to pay for them.
So it's all about a picture that was.
I mean, listen, I think you as a board, it's a good, it's a difficult.
It's not A, it's local every month.
It's a difficult conversation to have. However, our, every time a community member complains, are you going to change something that's really good and people are enjoying? That would be my weakness.
No, but when you sit there and you preach about a board of seven or a board of eight, and you're taking one board member and posting their picture on every Facebook site in the city, is it really a board of seven or eight?
Well, I can just say to you from Monica's stance.
This is.
Monica's piece, Monica is a very vital point of the Promise Zone, and I would guess that Ellen Lipton would say she's representing her and Ed at that. I mean, we, I guess Ed is the new president of the Promise Zone. You could ask Ed to come and hand them out, and then people are going to say, why is Ed at all of our board meetings handing those out? She's here, it's about the kids, I think. I worry that this discussion is maybe.
I will just talk to Promise Zone about not doing.
Darren?
If I could, now I'm hearing something different, that it's the picture that is the problem.
I mean, it's.
Because if it's the picture, then why can't all of us stand together like we used to in front of the flag? And board members and whoever was involved and Dr. Crippie, you know, whoever was involved with it, they would stand as a group with the student and take the picture of the student and then put that out on Facebook or the video that I made.
Maybe, because that would might get difficult. Bring another board member in every time you bring a different one from a different school that another board member adds in. I think it's horrible that community members are commenting about pictures of our kids when we work so hard.
It just gets into.
They're not talking, if they're asking, how come there's only one person in the picture when there's a whole board? It's all right with me.
It just because the shirt came from the Promise Zone.
It's not a personal.
I wish you would have talked to me about this and not like this. We could have had a normal conversation about this.
Well, again, so one, Monica can hand them out at the end, she could hand them out at the beginning, or we could take a picture, rotate the board members, because right, that's how we're going through. So you could walk the person up.
Why does it have to be a board member? Why can't it just be you and Mrs. Donovan, just like me? Or like they do in the.
The fact of the matter, the shirts in the first place, were they were from the Promise Zone. So a Promise Zone person, in our aspect of we're paying for them, was going to be in the picture. I'm here already.
But Darren just said when the Lions Club was there, that nobody from the.
Most of the time, they didn't. Once in a while, they would, but most of the time, it was a no.
I think it's a beautiful thing that the Promise Zone gives us shirts.
It is.
And that they celebrate that as well.
So do we. We didn't say it wasn't a wonderful thing that the Promise Zone, I just said that, that the Promise Zone is fantastic, and we give them the venue, and it's nice to have the partnership. I just said that. Nobody's knocking the Promise Zone, nobody's knocking Monica. It's people say you're a team and there's only one person, and I, so I just explained, she's on the Promise Zone board, so she's doing it, and we're trying to come together as a team, teamwork all the time, and then she's separate in the pictures. It doesn't matter, I said I would bring it up, and so I brought it up.
You did.
And nobody's knocking the Promise Zone by any means.
Absolutely not.
By no means is that intent.
We're just having a discussion if there's a different way we can present.
So I guess it will remain how it is.
And then, why, why does it have to be like that, Beth?
We'll go on to.
Well, I guess you might want to hear from other board members and their thought about that because I think you were moving on. Heidi said, why does it have to be like that? And so you do need to give some guidance as a group. This really is her job. And if it was, would it be okay that she was, you know, Fernando gets his picture taken in it too? So I guess you have to decide as a group how you want to walk through this. It's a very difficult.
Is it her job when she's in this, representing at a board meeting? If she did it at the school, but it's at a board meeting where there's.
I will talk to Promise Zone, and we will not do the shirts anymore. If we want to do it from the board, if it's a board thing, then we will discuss it that way.
Yeah, Monica's the one that actually got this whole thing going.
I worked really hard to do this.
And just like she does at the dinner.
Because we did not have this. I worked hard to even do Student of the Month. I pushed and pushed and pushed to even do this, and begged the Promise Zone to do the shirts and give the shirts to kids, and we do all that. and give the shirts to kids, and we do all that.
So, if it's that important to you, Monica, then what's the big deal about working with the board to figure out a different way to present it to the students?
I have no problem figuring out a different way. The complaint in that aspect was a picture. That's what's hard. It's never, with never ill intentions to be just a picture of me, so this conversation could have happened at a different way. Instead of like this and making me feel like everything I've done has been useless.
I don't think that's the point, and if you feel that way, then I don't think that's the intention. But when we have a conversation, we have to have a conversation as a board, we're not all together.
So, then, as a board, I think that we discuss about doing t-shirts from the district, then, as opposed to the Promise Zone.
I think this is a shame, honestly, that we're having this conversation here. We're losing sight about what it's about, it's about the kids, right? We're honoring the kids.
It is about the kids.
I get it, I'm speaking, I'm speaking.
Why can't there be a mutual...
Please let me speak. I'll let you speak.
Okay.
Please let me speak, thank you. I think we are putting an image out there, right? There's already a perception that this board is divided and we don't get along, and then we're up here having this conversation about something that, you look at our agenda, this team, we've got all kinds of important stuff we're talking about, and when, you know, we get down to the brass tacks of it, this is about the kids. I never thought twice about how it was handled, I thought, "This is great, Monica does a lot of work with the Promise Zone, good." That's my two cents. I have no problem with the way it goes now, and that's my two cents.
So, yeah, I'd like to respond, because it is about the kids, you're, you're right. It's also about this board being split and being a team, and so, it wasn't about the picture, it's about, how come she's separate when you guys are a team? So, it's kind of like, it's absolutely about the kids. It's also about being a team, that it's not about the individual picture. We got two things in my mind, you know, going on, but it's definitely about the kids. So, I, I didn't say anything about that we shouldn't do it and Promise Zone, we just shouldn't bother with it and all that, that would not be right. That's not what the point of the conversation was.
No, that's, that's fair. I just, and I learned about what our actions up here reflect, you know, our actions, you know, the community perceives them, and I think this is kind of petty in a way, and I get it, everyone has entitled their opinion, and I respect that.
You know, the other thing that's very hard about being on a board is talking to people individually, like, "We're here, I'm sorry that it turned out to be an embarrassment because it wasn't meant to be that." This is, it's about having a discussion as a board, as a team, without saying, "Oh, she called me and told me this part about it," but she didn't, this is the only venue where we are allowed to talk in public, to resolve anything. You can't have more than three people, you break the Open Meetings Act, and it's difficult, but this is the only time that we're all together. So, do you have, April, do you want to say anything? Darren already chimed in, and Debbie?
I, to be honest, I, I just don't think that this is, I, I see what you're saying about public discussion and not having more than three people in a room, but, this is the person I'm hearing of this, that this even was an issue, and I can respect how we want to have a public discussion, but I do think this could have been more of a temperature check type of conversation as opposed to bringing it up here. I don't even know that this is something worthy of a vote, to be honest with you. This is not, I mean, when, when we're talking about things that are in the weeds and very singular person-level issues, this is, this is one of those things. I, I don't, I don't know that this is worthy of the amount of discussion that it's had. They're, they're paying for it, it's their project. If we want to take on that expense, if we want to sort of dictate how it's done, then I'm, I'm okay with that, but if this is a project that's sponsored by a community group or a student group, then, I mean, in my mind, that group is the one that gets to choose how they present the materials. If, if nothing else, I'll just say that I, a heads up or a little bit of extra information in board books about what this was about, maybe would have been prudent, so that we were not hollered at and did not feel like a personal issue.
Debbie? I think that Darren came up with a, a good compromise. I only said the last in line because, and they don't have to carry the t-shirt through the line and shake their hands, because sometimes kids don't know how to properly shake hands, but, or even if we moved the line, so Monica's in the front with the student and Dr. Crouppie, and if there's another representative from Promise Zone that sometimes come, I, I don't know his name, I'm sorry.
Fernando.
Fernando, thank you, and then come down that way, and she wouldn't be as separate. I think that we hopefully can hold the compromise, but I think it was two different issues. I don't think anybody ever said they didn't want Promise Zone to do it, so I'd like the point about you saying however they want to present it, but I also see the point of the board being a board, so if we move the line, I don't know. That's, I guess it's something that we can all just think about and maybe email suggestions or just leave it, and decide, talk with Promise Zone people and Monica, and, but I think that was two different issues. I'm paying for it and sponsoring it was not, was never intended, that wasn't part of the issue that, in my mind, but, from what I heard.
I know it's very difficult, but we need to remember, she is the Promise Zone, she is the representative of the Promise Zone. That needs to happen for us.
So, maybe there should be some kind of announcement or something on the agenda as representatives of the Promise Zone, so people understand that she's part, not everybody knows Monica's part of the Promise Zone. I mean, I didn't know that she did all that work behind the scenes and got the shirts and all of that, so the community doesn't know, maybe it needs to be stated. Thank you to the Promise Zone tonight, the representatives are...
We certainly could start the announcement. I'd also like to not make the principals come at every meeting, I think that's a lot to ask of them and go back to the way we were, they sent their information, because that's making them come to every single board meeting, and I think that's a lot for them, they shouldn't have to come to every meeting. Yeah, yeah, that we just read it for them, and...
That was a temporary thing, but many districts have the principals come and do that.
I know.
It doesn't mean we have to do it, but it is, is not out of the ordinary.
Oh, sure, if they come, I think I've had them do it before, but...
I...
Thank you for that.
I don't know where this ends. Do we, I think we leave it how it is. It was a discussion, it's about kids, we needed to have the discussion.
I do like the idea of announcing that Monica's here as a representative, standing up there as a representative of the Promise Zone.
We certainly can do that and do a better job of thanking the Promise Zone every time and as the representatives tonight. We certainly can, Jamie can write that up for each time.
Is that all right?
Yeah.
Oh, you want to, you want to think about it, or?
Whatever you guys would like.
I think maybe, you know, if we need to revisit the conversation tomorrow, we can, or later on.
All right.
If that's okay with you, Bev.
That's fine. All right, Hazelwood caretaker.
Okay, so, we have had some people that applied to the caretaker, we've obviously not moved on any of that since December. We would have to have some work done, but my suggestion is, is that we interview sometime in October, November, with some work that's going to have to be done on the property before someone could live there, bring that recommendation to you for a next summer start or spring start.
Are these people that are applying, are they from Hazel Park, or are they...
Can't answer that. I just have a list of names that Jamie wrote down for me, so, that were in there and applying, so we would make sure it's live again, put a new one up there, put the timeframes in there, what we're looking for, we bring it to the board to keep you updated.
To be posted, or do we post it?
It's, we posted it online, and we have applicants.
We took it down because we were putting it on hold, so we, you know, it's inactive and hidden right now.
You just put it on our, like, under our employment?
In the, yeah, under our employment, under our employment opportunities, it was done, gosh, sometime last year, and then, we didn't move on it because the work on the house needs to be done, and that wasn't ready, and so we inactivated it, and...
And you'd have to decide if you're going to put some sinking funds into, I think it's roof, windows, and deck that has to be done, and then painting of the house.
I have appliances too, I thought you did.
What was?
Appliances, I thought, they took them away.
Uh, I can't answer that.
So, just to refresh my memory and everybody else's, this, we had decided that we were going to pay someone to live in the, in the...
We don't pay them, they are there for free.
Correct, they, they get room and board.
And we would have a contract this time, and we would also, that means that they have to get, that's part of IRS, because it's a, it's a compensation thing, right? And then, so we would do it October, November, interview, and then with the hope of having some, once we do the sinking fund and all the items, have the items that, and we'd have a cost for that, so that to be done, you know, and then someone move in in the springtime, summer, to keep it up.
But I'm just refreshing that someone will be living there.
Somebody would be living there, full time.
It's not somebody that's going to go up once in a while and...
No, no, no.
Okay.
I just want to make sure, when Bev and I talked, we wanted to make sure everybody was still good with that process.
Okay, request for student art, number six under other.
So, we have a request from an individual, and I know that you've seen it, that is requesting, and I sent you the picture of what it is, there is, students did artwork, and they put it up where the individual used to sit at the high school, it's a beautiful piece of art that they did. And in the conversation, I shared with Bev, "Let's bring it to the board," but my suggestion is, is that if we're going to give student artwork to someone, that we have to have a process in place, so when the next person asks for the artwork, or the next person asks for the artwork, what's that process that you're doing? So, really, that's the little p processes that we have in place. For example, if Jane Dervis said, "I no longer want the picture of my father up there in the hall named after him, are we going to tear it down and give it to them?" So, you've got to think about when and how, because you're giving directions to us, and then we would get it memorialized somewhere in the writing. So, I opened this up for your conversation, you know, this one is a hard conversation as well, but my understanding from Bev who was there, right, that the art, it was done in her honor, not for the family, so it's...
So, that's what I was going to ask, you know, like, say, when we do hometown head off, we have our alumni come walk through, like, if one of them did that, like, that's cool to remember. So, like, I, I feel like when it, something like that was done in memory of a person, not for that family, like, it should state if our alumni comes and it's gone, like, I would feel bad.
You're 100% right, because a lot of kids made that, not just one kid.
Right, that's what I mean, like, I just feel like it's sentimental for the school and that spot, and then if anything, like she said, if anything sucks, and they're like, "No, we want this now," or, "No," like, it wasn't done for the family, it was done in memory for the students at the time, for that person who unfortunately is no longer there.
Totally agree with you, just like, I've been thinking about this, and in regards to that, those bricks that are laying out there, it says, "In memory of Walton's family," or, are we going to allow them to pick up a brick and say, you know, "That was my family's brick," and, you know, take it, or are we going to allow them to take the rose bush that's in memory of Mrs. Barnett? You know, I mean, I, I don't, yeah, and I didn't think about it because it kept coming up as a portrait, and it's not a portrait, it's a mural that students created that donated it, and I'm trying to find the video for that class day, so I can hear what they said when they donated it to, you know, to the school.
I have a question. Like, you were talking, Darren was talking about, you know, like, the stones that say, "In memory of," and in the Rose Garden, there's, there was signs that said, "In memory of, posted out." Is there anything by that picture that says, "In memory of"?
No, I, I sent that picture to you the other day, it doesn't say anything.
So, maybe, can we put like a, I don't, I don't know the urgency...
That would be a compromise.
Right, I don't know the urgency of this person wanting it so bad deeply, it is a very large piece of artwork, and so, maybe if we compromise and put a plaque and maybe a picture of this, the parent, as a compromise? We'd like to keep it, can we do this?
I mean, I think you can do whatever you want, I think you have to say, what parameters do you have when you are going to go back and do something after something's done? That the board, board can make that decision, but how did you make that decision about what you're going to do? So, whatever, however you made that decision, when someone else wants a picture up, or somebody else wants something on there, how are you going to make that decision? Like, we made a committee that makes those determinations about recommendation to the board when you name something. I just, that's all I would ask, is that, let's not take us down a slippery slope of trying to figure out when and how we do things.
Yeah.
You know, I, I certainly understand emotion and feelings and wanting, that I also understand that some kids did that.
I can tell you my son, he says, "Mom, I put that one in right there, I said you just did one, so it was an art class project, I wasn't in art, but I did put that piece in right there."
And there's probably 800 pieces of that thing, so does that mean 800 kids did that?
Yeah.
Even then, that's a thing, do we allow one of the kids to ask for it? Like, it makes it, like, oh, I did, I didn't have this.
It's a gift to the school, it was a gift to the school.
That's what I think.
And because it reminded them of a very, what I understand, to be a very positive, sunshine person.
Oh, she was.
That was there the whole time. As a matter of fact, I, when I was in the school for the event that we had for our teacher, I was like, "Oh, this is the picture." I mean, like, I hadn't, I've seen it a million times, I didn't know what that was for, and Rachel's like, "Yes," that she was an amazing woman, and the kids just wanted to put it where she was, and that she was just a ray of sunshine, is really...
I like the idea of a plaque.
And, and telling the story of that. Because I walked by it a thousand times, this is probably everybody here.
Same.
And not really know what it was, right?
Right.
But...
Yeah, that's what I think, the story behind it is impressive, that there were that many people that were involved in it. I, I agree with Heidi, I probably walked past it, you know, 50-plus times.
Oh, that's pretty.
It wasn't sure that that was the piece that we were referencing, but it, I, I can, I understand the emotion behind it, I can also see how that meaning is shared with the students that created it, placed and came up with the decision to create that piece. And I can appreciate that it took an enormous amount of work, because it is, it's a very detailed, large piece.
And I thought maybe a compromise we could, if we ever were to take it off the wall and we were going to put it in storage, at that point, maybe we could give it, because we're not going to be using it anymore, but I don't see that happening, but maybe we can do something like that.
I think we need to focus more back on just the general principle, if someone asks for something.
Right, what is the process for her?
Maybe that committee you spoke about, maybe that committee can get together and come up with a process going forward as to how we handle, respect the situation, so then we have it, we have it in writing, and, you know, what our policy is.
So, would you like to revert back to the committee to do that? I, I do believe where that is a beautiful thing to think about a picture and what have you, I don't think that was the purpose of the email, and I'm not...
No, I know, but, I mean, I don't think that he, that this individual's going to get this it, because it was donated to the school, but at the same point, we've all agreed that we've walked by and not ever realized what it was for. So, maybe as a compromise, say, "Hey, you know, listen, this is a beautiful piece of work, we understand, but we'd like to do this, and I hope you understand."
Would you like us to move in that direction? Would you like us to refer it back to our committee to get it back up again to write that procedure?
I, I like the idea of the procedure, because I, I think it's reasonable to think that this will not be the last of a, maybe not similar, but of the same major request, and instead of having to solve these as, again, singular one-off issues that are taking, you know, time and thought, that we have something that's already there that we can refer back to.
Yeah, everyone's going to want the bricks now.
I can tell, with Heidi's idea though, I like the idea of both.
The what?
The graduate, like, front door.
The kid in the library or the graduate's front door.
Were you not talking?
No, I wasn't.
I can think so.
I mean, well, I, I think that the, the procedure is the way to go, but I would like for, in that procedure, to have a process for memorializing and putting up the plaques and, and having that be part of it, so that if that individual, in this particular instance, chooses to do it that way, then that, that's the option that's there, but I do think that that should be, I think that needs to be enveloped into the committee creating the procedure.
And I'd like to, I'd like to bounce back to a couple other things that have happened along the way. One, I think, oh, sorry.
Spider.
That we had some items in the courtyard at the high school which had some plaques. I think we want to go back and make sure that we have all of those, and if it's changed because the trees have died, to maybe develop some, have this committee suggest some kind of garden to be developed. And then I also think that I received requests some years ago, maybe two years ago, from Sandy, that had some things that were at Edison, that when they renovated that school, they took it down, so maybe we can go back and ask people share with us some things that we develop some kind of system to have that somewhere in our district in memory of the families, because we never want to not remember people before us.
Right, I like that.
So, you had a committee, right?
Yes, I'd love to see, it was like Darren as a community member, Tina Seferian and who else?
Five or six of us.
Yes, I'd like to go back to see who was all on the committee, but we would get some people that have some longstanding roots that know some of the district, because oftentimes, they, people that have been here for a long time, and we know, Monica, you're a poor generation, Hazel Parker, Jamie, you're a poor generation, Hazel Parker, I mean, it just goes on, right? That, that those people that have been around can kind of help us think through some of that and put something that is promising for our community.
I just would like to say, I knew that person, and I think the family should be very proud that they were loved in that way, and that the community still wants to have it there to, to honor that person that they love so much. So I think that it should stay, but are we voting next week?
I would just, no, I would just...
You're just...
Informational.
You've given me guidance in what direction to go, and we'll get that committee, and I'll relook and try to get some more people that have been there long-term to finish your...
That speaks volumes about that lady that sat there.
Yes, I heard she was fantastic.
Okay, therapy dog handbook.
So I...
Did we skip for, that's for student argument?
Did I miss?
Oh, okay, not the art.
I was just being careful how I named it. So, the school therapy dog handbook, I spoke with Bev, because I really have not brought Rocky back, and I didn't bring Rocky back because I wasn't sure, when I was at home listening to the conversations, what the point was, and she shared there was concerns about policy and how it was named in there, and so I went back, changed this to 2526. I removed any conversation about board policy, because really, this is the protocols of how we do things, right? You have broad policy about things, but the hand, our handbooks, which we have a ton of handbooks, and I will get them on a better drive for you for 2526, and we're looking, because Bev said there were some names in there, so we'll double check all of them. So really, this gives us the guidance of what we do with having an organization, and it's TDI or one that's approved, and when you are, only because I know this, right? When you're TDI, you have to have insurance. Like, I have a property insurance, that's how they cover if anything would happen with Rocky, and so you have to provide that to the school. Your vaccinations, well, your organizations won't have your dog license if they don't have their vaccinations, and you have to turn them into TDI every year and show that Rocky's up to date on his vaccination. So just knowing some of those properties, and then also that where, if somebody brings another dog in, they have to bring it in so that the superintendent or designated meets it, because while someone might pass a test, they might not be so nice as the person, so you want to see them around kids and other people as well. So, just kind of, so I removed the indication for its policy, and then corrected on appendix, say, it doesn't say the Board of Education policy, 8300 governs, because that was the Neola policies that we had, where we had more of a policy. Now we just have a general, you know, dog piece, so those are the changes that have been made to make this clear that this is a handbook procedure for dogs. As a matter of fact, several districts have used our handbook, because we stole it from somebody else in another state, by the way.
That was my thing, I just wanted, if it says refer to the policy and there isn't a policy, that becomes confusing, so...
There should be a policy.
There should be, and like, when we're doing policies...
There's not, there's not, it's not required by law to have a therapy dog policy, and so I think that's what you were hearing, and you're going to hear tomorrow night as well, is that some of these policies, that is, you could add an administrative procedure, but you have a handbook that the board actually approves, so you've, you've done the small p, we've given you through a committee the process for having therapy dogs in a school. It is not required by law to have a policy. We're just used to it. It's a change. So we're asking you to think a little differently about, you've got all these handbooks in place. We'd be happy not to do so many handbooks.
Okay, cell phone.
Cell phone. So, in my few days back, I was barraged with requests of a cell phone ban in our schools. I know Kendall's like, please, and I said, well, we first have to do our policies, and then see which policy group we do, and then determine, and that takes time to change all of those, and so in the effort, I wanted to test your temperature about cell phone bans in schools. We do have a NearPod, NearPod is that one's called?
YonderPod.
YonderPod, NearPod was a...
It's a digital thing.
Tool. We have a, they're expensive, but we might end up some mental health money from the state and safety money, and also to look at what some other districts have done to stop the cell phones from being in the classrooms. We already have a policy that says you can't have them out, but we know, I mean, we could also pilot it, like, the junior high and start there and see what it is, or pilot it at Advantage, which Kendall is asking us for, but, and then kind of give a feedback to the board on what that's like, but cell phones cause a lot of issues in school, and the research is huge on the importance of getting kids to not be on their cell phones all the time.
I know you sent an email that had a good article, or maybe it was on the Bulletin Book.
No, I did, yeah.
It mentioned that Michigan has potential legislation. Do we know what that is?
The legislation was broader, though, just to say you need a policy. So we already have a cell phone policy, but it was not specific.
There's a second legislation, because I noted it at the government, so there's one that's really broad that just says you have to have one, and then there's another one that is a little more specific. Neither one of them have actually, to my knowledge, passed, but depending on which one does pass, I think that one will pass, I don't know which one will, so, but you can always go above and beyond the law, you just can't go less.
Right. I think it's going to be that they're telling you, you have to have a policy. I don't know that a lot of these places, I think specific school districts are banning, and we already sort of have a policy in place that we're doing. Our administration is asking to go one step further into that, and then we would bring a proposal back to you quickly in August to suggest a procedure in our student handbook.
I'm all for a cell phone ban.
There's been a lot on TV lately about the kids on the phones and the social media, and it's really, yeah, it's not good.
I mean, I was warned on it. Because we are raising, I mean, he's, like, at the high school level, you're raising adults, and they've got to be responsible.
So I totally agreed when I came 10 years ago, and I was like, oh, you know, like, we need to teach them to use them properly, until I walked into Scott Guthrie's class and a student was on the phone while he was teaching, and I leaned over to that student and I said, he's teaching the class, you need to not be speaking on your phone. And the student looked at me and said, I'm speaking to my mom, and when we gave her discipline, the mom took her out to buy clothes. And so from then I was like, we're dealing with a different day and age of kids learning responsibility. The responsibility thing needs to be, how many times have you walked into a store and the staff members are on their phones like this in a store? No, we need to teach kids to put them down, right, and, and put them away. And what we've done oftentimes becomes a battle between kids and teachers, and we shouldn't have to put them in the midst of that battle to tell the kids, please give me your phone, please give me your phone, and then the kid's like, no, this is my personal property, you know, this is what I have, and so I think that I, I understand being torn for safety reasons, but all the safety training tells you that the kids should not be contacting their parents during that time, because you're giving away where you are in that kind of situation. So, you know, you, they should not be on their phones during a safety piece, they should be off. And how many times have we had parents flying up there, and then we had to battle parents who were panicked?
Okay. Sorry. I think it went towards Bev, did you see it?
Is there anybody that doesn't support cell phone? He is a little more, and maybe a pilot.
So are we, like, banning them totally, they can't even have them at lunch?
Yes.
Totally.
Yes, cell phones at lunch are worse.
You can't even bring them into the building.
Well, no, we would have, we would kind of look and make a suggestion and speak with our administrators, and I might start with Kendall and then move to the junior high, depending on how that works, because I think he has some ideas about how to do that. I mean, Invest, they have, like, the little cubby holes, male cubby holes, and the kids come in and put their, in the principal's office, put their phones in there, and then they pick them up and they leave. That's that bug.
And that works.
And that works for them, but it's a little different. It might work for Kendall, but maybe we might want to have, because people will be trying to take other people's phones.
Does Invest have something in writing about...
No, they follow our handbook.
They just do, I was just curious if they had sort of the jumping off.
And I think Edison just takes the phone from the kid, they just want them, and then they take the phone, put it in their container, and they pick it up when they leave.
I thought when we were at a conference, maybe some of the current freshmen, I'm like, that one school had a bag.
That's what we're doing, the yonder bags next week. We're doing a workshop.
And when they go through security, they have to put the phone in the bag, and then it automatically unlocks when they're in the building.
Correct.
Yes, and I think Avondale does do that, and they've been doing it for a couple years.
Oh, yeah, they do.
They did, and so that Jim might be somebody to chat with about how that's worked in the timeframes of getting in, but not only using the same metal detectors we're doing, but then he also has a bag for the phones. I haven't had that conversation with him.
They have a, when you go in, they have a really, it's a big school, they have it set up for phones, water bottles, and something else, I don't...
Hats, maybe? What school?
Avondale High School. And hats are a good idea, too, because we already say no hats, and yet we allow the kids to have their hats on.
I might be wrong about hats, but I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure the other thing is hats.
I like a good hat more than anyone when I'm outside, but clearly I'm not wearing a hat when I'm at work.
And that's another respect to me.
Yes, it is, for work, it really is. Unless you're in a job where you can wear a hat.
Oh, yeah, like, in the military, they have to take off their hat before they walk into the building. At the threshold, they take their hats off, because it's respect.
Okay, we're set. Public comment, we're up to public comments, seeing nobody. We're at adjournment, it doesn't say...
We're supposed to adjourn.
It doesn't say comments, but we'll be here again tomorrow night, so do one motion to adjourn and save your comments for tomorrow, when it's not 9:30.
No, it won't be as long. We're going to, we are going to talk about portrait of a graduate and let you guys have some input as well as some draft strategic plan conversation before we take it to Ad Council, so there will be a little conversations for you guys to do. We won't make you get up and run around, but we'll get the chance for some input.
That's right. It's March 32.[1790.41]